Twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-four Select Board Meeting of Kent Town in Kingston. We'll start off with Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I got it, Charlie.
Good morning, everyone. So our first item on the agenda, this is, we'd like to open it up to just any of our boards and committees, if they'd have any comments before we jump into our larger departments. Ernie, do you have anything today? Come forward and grab a mic, Ernie.
I'd just like to participate in the discussion later on today on the discretionary preservation easement.
Okay.
On one way Exeter Road. And that's just all I have.
Yep. Okay. Stacy, do you have anything?
Just one quick thing, as some of you may know, we had another Kingston Days meeting, like a week and a half ago, and we only got four people to sign up to be on steering committee. So we do not have a steering committee for Kingston Days this year. I am in the process of notifying our vendors that we will not be having Kingston Days this year because of the amount of people who volunteered, who showed up for steering committee. I will do a post on Facebook today, but I wanted to make sure it got presented here before I publicly made the notice that Kingston, due to lack of participation, we will not be having Kingston Days this year.
Okay. No, it's obviously very disappointing. I know, I know a lot of folks, everybody wants to see it happen, but apparently there's not enough people that want to help make it happen. And it's too bad. I know it'll be definitely a missed event. So that's, I'm sure it's going to be very difficult for the town to not be able to have that. And I'm hoping this will be one of those things where people don't know what they got till it's gone, and maybe that'll really motivate people to step up next year to make sure that we don't have an absence of it again in the future. All right. So we'll jump into our department information discussion. We will start with you, Chief.
All right. I'm sure most of you are aware that we had a pretty big structure fire last Wednesday on the 21st. All in all, everything considered, everything went well. Unfortunately, we lost the house, but we saved a life. We had a firefighter go down on scene, which we performed CPR, performed, gave one shock with the AED. He was transported to the hospital and is recovering in ICU at Leahy in Burlington. So a couple of thank yous that I do want to convey to the Kingston Police for their assistance. They were instrumental as the first responders to the scene, helped with traffic, pulled the homeowner out and assisted with some of the dogs. Kingston Highway, we called in later for sanding and tearing down part of the building to ensure that we extinguished all the fires. The KFD Ladies Auxiliary helped us with food and water. Saddleup Saloon donated some food. Dunkin' Donuts of Kingston donated food. Carriage Town Bar and Grill donated food. The Select Board for your support. American Red Cross was called in to help the homeowners in their time of need. And then New Hampshire SPCA were called in because there were, we saved four out of the five dogs. There was a goat and a horse on scene. So all in all, it's a testament on how well we work together, also a testament on the limited staffing we have, showing up with two people. There's a two-in, two-out rule, kind of told, untold in the fire service. So, you know, you risk a lot to save a lot, risk a little to save a little. So unfortunately, the two staffing that we have, you know, during 24 hours a day here in Kingston, you know, allows us to put water on the fire from the outside, but not go inside to really make a primary attack. But once other people started showing up, we were able to get inside and attempt. Limited water in the area. We used a tanker shuttle. All in all, everything went well, and nobody was injured seriously, and everybody's recovering. So thank you to everybody involved.
No, it sounds like everyone did a fantastic job. I know the dispatching side said you guys did great. Just to follow up onto that, I have spoken directly with the family. I know tons of folks have reached out looking for ways to help them. The family is asking that if anyone wants to make donations, to please do it to the American Red Cross, the New Hampshire SPCA, or if there's any provision set up for the injured firefighter, they want to make sure they're taken care of. It's not that they don't appreciate the outcry of help, just when people are involved in these. The insurance company makes it very difficult for folks to accept a lot of things, and if they accept financial instruments or fundraiser pays, sometimes the insurance company then withholds the amounts in their payout for the recovery of the building and other assets if you receive outside stuff. So they just, they said they're not looking for any direct donations to them to please support those organizations that assisted them through this situation.
Yeah, one, one group that we did forget about, and I think we take for granted sometimes, is Rockham County Dispatch. They're our dispatch center. They did a great job. I called for a firefighter down. I actually have listened to the radio traffic, and they assisted all the way through the call. So I know some sheriff's deputies were there assisting with traffic, but dispatch really went above and beyond during this incident. So thank you to all, and we'll keep, keep pushing forward.
You had quite a few fire departments respond to mutual aid.
Yep, so I don't want to type the whole meeting, but so whenever we have smoke in the building or a structure fire, we have an engine and a ladder automatic from mutual aid companies. And then we end up going to a first alarm, probably a second alarm equivalent with tankers. Unfortunately, I left the scene to go to the hospital to be with the injured firefighter, probably a half hour into it, I guess. But the radio traffic I heard, and I was in contact with the scene throughout the night, and everything seemed to go well, so.
Question, Chris, on the donations to Red Cross or to SPCA, is it just general donations, or are there funds within those two organizations set up for it? Should we designate?
No, I think if you want to put a comment, you know, you can put it in there, but they don't, they don't designate it out as a separate fund. They want it to be received in general, because I guess they can work with the insurance company for anything they've received through the American Red Cross. But it's, the water gets very muddy when taking direct donations after a fire, when the insurance companies get involved. But, so just their request, general donations to the New Hampshire SPCA, the American Red Cross, or any fundraising efforts that may be needed for the injured firefighter was the request of the family.
Okay, thanks.
The only other thing that I do need to just get clarification on is, we transported the injured firefighter. I feel that if we bill that injured firefighter, we're really just billing ourselves because it's going to be a workman's comp claim. So we can talk about it offline if you want, but maybe we either don't send a bill, or whatever, we can talk about that at a later time, but just wanted to give you that.
I mean, it seems counterproductive to do that.
In those circumstances, I would, I would.
Yes.
Not bill.
Chris, did you happen to mention to the homeowners that they should probably come in and file for an abatement?
I will tell them that today.
And while we're on that subject, maybe when we get to Marissa, if there's anything that has happened with your office as a result of this tragedy, you can let us know.
Okay.
Okay, so the rabies clinic date has been set for April 6th from 9:00 to 12:00. So anyone that needs to license, get a rabies vaccination for their dog so that they can license it. In 2024, we have registered 618 dogs so far. We only have 1,749 left to go before April 31st, sorry, April 30th. So we've been doing a lot of things. Caitlin and I are both participating in testing at the Secretary of State's office for the new election net program, which we use to track registered voters, absentee ballots, elections, all that. So we've been participating in that, kind of, kind of nice. I actually had an opportunity to have breakfast with legislators last week, and I have got found someone to sponsor two bills for me, so working towards that to make some changes. Taxes, delinquent notices went out February 1st. We're getting ready for leaning and deeding, and then, of course, the election next month. We're starting to gear up for that, getting our ballots in, counting. We have not set a date for the testing yet because we haven't received all of our test ballots. That's it.
On the human services end, it's not particularly exciting, been a little bit quieter, so I'm catching up with admin work. I am helping Paula this week with the finance stuff while she's away. So I'm going to be processing payroll tomorrow, which a lot of you have sent in your payroll already, but if you could get that in, it can go to Paula or myself, either way, I'll get it. And I'm going to be processing some invoices, so get those in. And I'm also working on the audit. We've had some auditor requests come in that I'm working with the auditor to get the information to them.
And Marissa, have you been contacted by the family who had the fire?
No, I haven't heard from anyone.
Are they, Tammy, like you were suggesting about the abatement, do we know that they are aware of this office and can seek some help perhaps?
They are aware.
They are?
They are aware of our resources that we have here. I think all their needs are being fulfilled right now.
Okay.
We have a lot going on at the library right now. Primarily, the library has, a foundation has been started for the library. It has 501(c)(3) status now, and it's registering with the state of New Hampshire, at which time, when that's accepted, it will open a bank account, and it'll be mainly for capital projects in the long term for the library, such as our outdoor education center that we're looking towards. It'll help us raise money for things like that and any long-term unforeseen or foreseen types of building projects. So I'm pretty excited about that. We have five residents who are now on our board, very active people, and we are very excited to have them and thank them. They've been doing a lot of work for us. We also, Lori and I have been working together on transportation forums. We had our first one on Thursday to try to figure out if we could possibly do a volunteer transportation type of organization in Kingston, see what other opportunities are open to us. Jeff, I've forgotten his last name, someone who helps coordinate transportation in this area. He's related to Rockingham Planning Commission, but not part of it. I can't remember the name of his organization. But anyway, he just showed up at the meeting, and he's going to be helping us, which is really nice. Our next forum is tomorrow at 6 o'clock, and we invite everyone to attend. We'd like feedback. We've picked up a few volunteers, potential volunteers, if we move forward with this. But we're still collecting information and still trying to figure things out with, with the town and people associated with the state and other organizations that can help us. We have a new library catalog. There's some growing pains involved there, but in the long term, it's going to be very beneficial because people will be able to get everything through one central system. So all their eBooks, all their audio. It's also a communication tool, and I want the town to think about how they might use that. So it's another way that people might be getting a lot of information, and we can put, not as a, it's not just a library catalog, but there's a space for us to put news and things. So I invite you, if there's anything really important that you want to share, that's just another outlet perhaps that you can use to share information. The library joined the Exeter Chamber of Commerce, and on April 2nd, we are hosting them at their Morning Mixer. It's going to be at the library. We invite all businesses in Kingston to come join us, to come network. We want to show off the best face of Kingston. They're coming to see our space. I'm going to talk about the outdoor education center with them, but it really is a chance for businesses too, to show off their best face and maybe make some connections in the seacoast area. I've been really pleased with the Exeter Chamber. They've helped us with a lot of things. They helped us, we've gotten some people for programs through them. We made a connection with somebody who serves older adults, who we're now working with, to help serve our older adults better. So it's a great, it's been a great way, just in a month, for us to connect, and we invite businesses to come join us and, and see what they can get out of them too. And then finally, on March 16th, or the snow day is the 23rd, actually, there's one more finally, we have our seed library opening. It was, we gave out 400 packets of seeds when we did this last year. I expect it to be bigger this year. So we invite everybody, and I want to thank Pollinator Pathways for sponsoring this at the library for us. And now I've forgotten my one other thing. Couldn't have been too important, but, but we do have a lot going on soon. Thank you.
Good morning. I want to start off thanking Chris for all his service here. I think this is our last department head meeting before you leave us, and Lori and Ellie, hopefully it's not goodbye. Thanks for all you did as well. And I want to thank Tammy, I don't thank them enough for all the work they do with us, taking money and putting in different columns and camp and everything. It's crazy, but it's a big help. Camp is full with waiting lists at this point, which is fabulous. Not sure they're all actually going to come, but we're going to be pushing people to get a deposit down, so hopefully that'll get rid of people that aren't coming, and what people that want to come, come in. So we have that. We have some events coming up that you, I handed out. I just want to highlight the Easter egg hunt for the kids. If any of the select board want to come, that's great. It's a fun, fun day. It's very quick, with lots of fun. And then the Adult Easter Egg Hunt, which benefits the rec center. Last year, we got a bench for the field up there near the court. Some of you have not signed up yet. There's only 21 spaces left, so just saying. Thank you.
Couple things. The Main Street Bridge project is not dead. We had a meeting with FEMA last week, and they had the calculations that they used to determine eligibility for a project. There were modifications we could make to make our number more favorable. So we're, our engineering firm is working through that. They're supposed to be getting me an upgrade, or updated pricing on that, just because they've, just in following up on this, it's kind of cut into the design budget for that project, so it'll just be an update. Updating the design numbers and this continued work on the FEMA paperwork. So that's in progress, but in order to be eligible for that, we would have to have our hazard mitigation plan updated, which was already in process. I believe the board signed up for the grant for that. Susan has a copy of that for you. The, the, the plan doesn't have to be completed, but it will have to be completed before we're awarded any money. So we can still be awarded for the project, but this is going to take approximately six months. So I just got the paperwork on Saturday, you're getting it today. So that's on there. There's also a PO to go with that for $9,000. At a minimum, the feds will pick up 75% of that. We have to pay it upfront, but the feds will cover that, and Graham's looking into whether the full amount is covered by the, the State Emergency Management Office. So you'll see that in front of you. The other item is, I'll save that till the end. Toll Road, where the solar farm is going to be going in for unitill, they've started logging out there. We've gotten some rough timelines from the contractors, so we're going to go out and notice the residents just to let them know what's going on. I've talked to quite a few of them, but just, we're going to go and paper that area. So the new intersection will just be a construction intersection for the duration of the project, and then at the end, they will be paving it, and that will become the primary egress and entrance for Toll Road off of Mill. That should be a pretty good upgrade, just based on site distances and things like that. So it's a really good deal for the town to have, we would have had to redo that intersection anyway, so someone else is paying for it, which is a good thing. After Candidates Night, I'm getting quite a few complaints about the sound issues. One thing I wanted to point out, everybody, is this is not a microphone on the table, and speak down to it because it picks up a lot of excess noise when you lift it off of the table. So that was what they said when they installed it. As far as the contract goes for that, you may want someone smarter than myself to look at that, but it seems like they provided everything that was promised in that. That was...
He's saying he's smarter than you.
There were... That was other people who made that contract and signed up for that, so I don't know what to tell you on that, but I guess Adam has thoughts on it, so I would check with him. And then the other thing is, we made an agreement where I would graze cattle up at the landfill. I'm doing a grazing plan through the Natural Resources Conservation System, and as the landowner, they just wanted to notify you that I would be going for a grazing plan. It's nothing to do with that, it's just because I graze animals out there, and you're the landowner on that. I have a copy of that here. I just thought it'd be weird if I signed it. Normally, I would, but yeah. So, and then I have the presentation for the town hall, ARPA funds, after Pedro's presentation, so be available for that.
Great.
Oh, and one last thing. I just wanted to follow up. I know quite a few people have used it. Just wanted to see if there were any issues with the iWork system as far as the facilities use portion. Does anyone have any issues with it? Is it working out?
Just, is, is, is there a, does somebody constantly monitor it? I think, I think there was an issue during the first couple of weeks where just the town hall was out of water, so they put in a request for water, and they were kind of just waiting on an answer of when they were going to get more water?
We got the request, and they showed up the next day to look for water. So Lisa was out, well, that was prior to that.
I think she might have been at training or something, or had something going on.
So it's, it's, I mean, if it's something like that, if it's an emergency, or...
We, I just, they were told to go through the portal and not call.
So, so I'm going to be working with Lisa this week to draft a policy for it. So we'll have all of those, if there's an emergency, you know, you can...
Yeah, still, still submit it through the portal so it can be tracked, but there are times where I think it would be appropriate to just say, hey, just, we want to make sure somebody sees this, but we absolutely need something to that.
Yes.
Absolutely. I mean, if the building's on fire, you don't enter that in an iWork. Just go ahead and call me or Graham, but...
I'd probably call the fire department before we ask fixing what's damaged.
Yes. Okay, I just wanted to follow up, make sure everybody's doing all right with that. And like I said, I know a lot of people have been using it, and that's great, and we appreciate it, and it makes things a lot easier on our end. So thank you for that.
Question for Phil.
Yeah.
We haven't, at this table, haven't talked lately about the, what's going on next door at the Grace Daily Barn. Do you have any update for us on that?
So we're taking down the tree Thursday or Friday, and then once that's out of there, we're going to start lifting the building. We've got to get some, so it'll be next week, depending on weather. We, I know we've got two or three days worth of rain there, but it seems we're out of the horrendously cold temperatures and warm-ups during the day, so we're going to be pushing forward to that in the next couple of weeks.
Thank you.
So can, can we still talk about the sound system thing, or do we want to finish with Joel and then talk about that, since Phil already brought it up?
I think we might, we can.
Personally, I think we need to have the company come in and take a look, and find out what this cutting in and out is. I know Adam has a couple of ideas that he might be able to tweak some stuff, but when we're in this room, we don't, Adam's not getting any indication. You can't tell when it's cutting out until you watch it, and then it cuts out. So...
It was, and it was, I went to go back and watch Candidates Night, and it was very difficult to watch because you couldn't hear questions, you couldn't hear responses.
But you couldn't tell in the room. There was no indication.
Correct.
So it's hard to troubleshoot a problem if there's nothing in front of you to troubleshoot.
Correct, because Adam, Adam finally ran out some new mics when it might have been Chuck texting to convey all the problems.
My husband was texting as well. Everyone's like, we can't hear you.
Number of people were texting, but is that the only meeting where we've had a recent problem?
No.
No, I think it's on numerous meetings.
Okay. Yeah.
Yeah, because I've noticed that when I've watched some YouTube, say, planning board meetings, the same thing happens.
Same thing, and it just cuts out, like someone's hitting the mute button.
Right.
So I, I don't know, I mean, again, maybe we're not supposed to hold this, but nobody told us, everybody keep it on the, right? So there's probably some user error there, but this, just cutting out, I don't know how we fix that. I, I don't think anybody in this room knows how we fix that. So I think we should probably look at the contract and see what their service agreement is with us and how they...
Because it's not, it's not like this is fully functioned properly ever since it was installed.
It never has.
Because we were waiting on parts, waiting on pieces.
Yep, yep.
So yeah, we definitely need to pull up in the contract, review what obligations they have, get them into, because if there are user error things that we're doing, it'd be great if they could help us correct them.
Yep.
But if it requires further technical assistance, we need to bring in professionals.
Yep. And I appreciate everybody who has provided constructive input on Facebook on how we fix it, but we, but we're going to go to the professionals and have them help us.
And hopefully, part of that will be having them take a look at what we see, what the public sees on YouTube, as, because, like you said, if you're in this room, you don't notice that necessarily.
Yeah, because from the operations console, Adam has no indication that there's any issue going on. So for them to just try and troubleshoot it from there and be like, nope, system's fine. They may have to do some test recordings and then go back and view them to see what the problem is.
So Susan, you're going to take that, you're going to take that for action and contact that company? All right, great.
Phil, question for Phil or Adam. The equipment that's in the room there is Comcast still involved with that, or would Comcast come in and take a look at it and tell us what needs to be modernized for the, for the whole system? I know years ago, back when we had a contractor, back when I was on, actually, as a part of the contract, we got them to come in and relook at the system and upgrade and do some stuff. Rather than a particular private company being, it used to all be their equipment. Do they have people?
It is not their equipment any longer. They give us $64,000 a year to keep it up.
Okay.
The issue, I ran into this when previously attempting, I could not find any competent professional to assist us in this. I think the people that were used for this are, like, if you want a home movie theater or something like that, they provide speakers and, you know, projectors and things like that. The issue's going to be is, they're going to claim it's not them because it's the broadcast equipment. And then the broadcast people will be like, no, it's the input equipment, so it's someone else's fault. We need to find someone who knows what they're talking about, because my feeling is, we're taking obsolete equipment and replacing it with obsolete equipment, and it's not working out.
Can we, can we call other towns that have either similar equipment or doing the similar thing, right? YouTube channel, you know, Plastow, Atkinson, you know, Manchester, Philadelphia, Pennsylvania, you know, let's not reinvent the wheel, but there's other people that are, maybe not the same exact equipment, but trying to accomplish the same goal of clear audio and video through YouTube and whatever, so I don't know.
Newton, Newton has a pretty good setup from what I heard.
There you go.
They're in the same city.
Yeah, Newton has a pretty good setup from what I heard. You know, I think they're working out of their town hall also, so same situation. I don't have much to report. We had one officer resign a couple of weeks ago, the 12th. We ended up putting the, yeah, we advertised on Indeed for a certified officer, and it took four days to get one. We actually had two certified people apply. I interviewed one on last Friday, and I made them a conditional offer. It was pretty quick. And I, reason for that is because we are paying fair wages. We have a good, good PD, fully staffed, as you know. And that's something that, you know, if you look at the fire department, they're down a person, decide to get any, anybody to apply because of their wages. So I think we need to work on that. And perfect example was, I had somebody full-time certified in four days.
Which Kingston was not known for grabbing already full-time certified officers. It was a revolving door training ground for decades.
Right. So I'd like to see the same situation go on for the fire department.
Okay.
That's all I got.
Pedro, do you have any comments other than before your presentation, just in general? You got to come, you got to come to the microphone.
Good morning. So, yeah, it's been a very busy morning. Well, we have, we have a very steady volume of permits flowing into the department, so we've got a lot going on. There are some commercial items that I've been in touch with the fire department and DPW. We're going to be addressing those items. We're gonna be addressing those items as they come. And, but, other than that, everything is moving firm and steady. And giving solutions to every problem that we come to and every challenge that we are presented with, so.
No, I will say, I appreciate the updates, I know it's, I appreciate like the written updates of what you've been doing every week and kind of the challenges you're facing, cuz you definitely walked into a lot. So I think it's good for all of us to get those, so thank you for those.
Yeah, it's been very helpful, especially in these early weeks.
Yes.
And all the catch-up that has to be done, that you're dealing with. For us to see that is, I, you know, I can appreciate that it takes you a while to put those reports together, there's a lot of information in there. And, you know, I would imagine that, you know, once you're settled in and things are sorted out, that report doesn't need to be quite as detailed or lengthy.
Correct.
For now, it's very helpful.
No, after the first week, I learned that it's better to start putting things in writing in the email format. Just so when I come Friday, it's just, oh, format what I'm sending, make sure everything makes sense. But it doesn't take long now, after the third week, it was pretty much a smooth fly. Like I said, it's just trying to get a proactive measure to addressing those things, so that you can get the information on time and the accuracy of the information on the head.
We had a couple of discussion items here under our department information discussion meeting. Volunteer forms needed for all committees, if you wanna touch on that?
I actually have copies of them, see now I feel like you can't hear me, I'm just here. So I spoke with Paula before she left. We're asking that anybody who has a volunteer on their committee or group, they have their people fill out a volunteer form. Regardless if they've done it in the past, we wanna make sure everybody is on record. So, I have some copies here, so if you have volunteers that work, volunteer being you're not paid, then please come and get a form. Each one has to be signed by the select board. And you're gonna write the committee and the dates just for, just put 2024. Okay, so I have these here, and then Paula can also provide them when she comes back via email if you need more copies.
I would suggest that maybe Susan send a copy out to each department head, so he or she has that readily available.
Does, does that need to be done by, say, awards and commissions who have official appointments that have been done through the tax collectors of Town Clerk's Office?
So, it came up for a question of liability. So people who are appointed and have a letter, we're not as concerned with. The people who are just showing up and helping, but I think Paula wants everybody to fill one out. But we can get clarification on that, but we really just wanna target the folks who don't have an appointment. Which I think there's probably more than we, than we realize, right? People who just come and they're helping and you just, you've been doing it for a year and you're not an official volunteer. So we wanna make sure that, you know, that they're covered and the town's covered. So should something happen while they're volunteering.
Okay, we had another item on here, use of separate post office boxes or mail receptacles. Were you working on this one too?
So that, that came up last week. So, what we, I think what we had talked about was that for the departments who have a post office box and are receiving mail, other than coming to the Town Hall, we wanna just get our arms around what is going to those departments. Just not, not a, it... Understanding that there's reasons why some mail goes to a post office box, and there might be a privacy issue or HIPAA issue or something like that. But we wanna make sure mail's going to the right department head. So if you could provide us, if you have a separate department, a PO box or other mail receptacle, you might have a mailbox at your building, just give us a rundown of the types of mail that you get. We just wanna make sure that mail's not being misdirected to the wrong place. And we didn't set a deadline, but it shouldn't take very long to get that information back.
Maybe Susan could send out a reminder to, and just have, and that could be the response back to Susan then.
Yeah, I sent out a request. Right. Yeah, but if we could, you know, I mean, you know, two weeks, right? I mean, that should be more than enough time, because you might forget what kind of mail comes to your box if it's not coming all of the time, right? So, we'll give it a couple of weeks. Just so we just, again, we just wanna get our arms around making sure the mail's going to the right places.
Okay, public, there's a note in here for public meetings to be held prior to decisions on paving.
Well, I brought up at the last board meeting that I have very, I'm very concerned about whether we could go forward on chip paving. Given the response we had at Jericho Drive area of town. And I wanted a discussion from the board and with the Public Works, pros and cons. Because even though it was definitely cheaper to do the chip seal, it doesn't look as pretty. I know, and pretty is not necessarily the right way to go. And saving money is important, and I really appreciate all the effort that Phil put in to make that effort, to determine the savings. Cause he's, if I'm correct, Phil, you said it'd be 32 years by the current rates to do all the paving in town. The other side of that was, I think every resident from Jericho Drive was here protesting that decision on our part. We didn't have a formal public hearing on it, but maybe we wouldn't want to go in forward. But I think we still need a discussion as a board whether or not we continue chip paving. When you think of, two-thirds of the community does not have children in school. And yet 85% of our tax dollars goes towards the school. And that's, that to me is a community obligation, I'm not complaining about, I might be complaining about the amounts, but I'm not complaining about the dollars being spent for the school, for sure. But, you look at the other side of it, we have a lot of people in town who are not participating in activities or services from the school. And if chip paving is an insult, cuz they wanna see dark tar on their roads, then I think we need to take that into consideration.
I mean, I don't mind, I think what was disappointing is that the Public Works Director put on a paving plan presentation for the entire season that was completely open to the public and that was an opportunity. Now, I get it, if they have a preference, but the one thing the Public Works Director has asked us, do not take that tool out of his tool bag as an option, because without unlimited funding, it could mean the difference between, okay, your road's gonna get chip sealed so it can maintain, or we have to wait till it falls in complete disrepair. And you're dealing with four years of potholes, ruts, and it eroding away before it's eligible and we can afford, and it's in the time where you can completely strip and repave it. So I don't mind, I don't mind their, you know, maybe broadcasting the informational session better about paving plans so they can voice their concerns of that and say, okay, well, if, if the consensus of every person on your street is that they absolutely don't want chip sealing, guess what? Your road may not be eligible for full strip and seal paving for another 12 years and you're gonna have to live with that. But I think those are hard decisions they're gonna have to make, but that, when you saw the cost differences between chip sealing to preserve a road for that number of years versus the other, I get, nobody, I'm probably one of the only people that thought it was kinda nice, I didn't mind it. But I get, I am absolutely the outlier in that. But I, I don't think it's with, with the financial difficulties that we're facing, I don't think we can take that as a tool out of the tool bag of, we may have to, we may have to live with it, unless people are willing to pony up the money to freshly pave everything at a rate that's consistent with the, you know, the time it takes to replace all the roads in town. But I just wouldn't wanna take it away as an option for them.
Well, I know after the last discussion with the residents in Jericho, we recognized that we did not do as good a job as we could have in notifying the residents when it was happening. And I know weather's a factor, I understand that, but, I don't know.
Did we or could we send certified letters to the people on that street?
We could, but it's, the point that I brought up, every issue in town is important to somebody. When does it stop? When, when is it, well, I want a special letter for any time you're doing anything that affects my house or my interests? Why, why do only they get it for paving? My taxes go towards this. And it's, and I, and I, I always go back to the, you know, desiring or not being willing to participate in the things that are going on throughout the year to stay informed on what's going on. We don't, why do we have to bear an additional burden of an overtaxed town employees and staff that we now have to send them a certified letter for every single thing that may impact them?
Fair enough.
And who's gonna fold those, Tammy? It's not your office, I know that.
So, if I can just add my two cents, I think what, the flavor I've gotten from a lot of people are just about like that, and about everything in general, is you can have the public hearing and they come in and voice their opposition against anything, chip sealing, kicks and daves, whatever it is. And then, everybody feels that their opinion doesn't matter because you do it anyway, right? So, and you kinda just said, we'll, we'll have a public, public meeting, so people can voice their opinion, but we're not gonna remove that tool. If, if the majority of people, let's say, using chip seal on that street say, "We don't want that." You know, and I don't, you can't poll everybody in the town of Kingston, right? It's not feasible, but I don't know, that's, that's what I get from a lot of people is, hey, even after a public hearing, they kinda just listen to you and wave by as you walk out the door angry, so.
I think my answer to that is it's... And Chris has been saying it, you can come in and voice your opposition, but you also have to tell us what you're willing to accept. So saying I won't accept chip seal is great, what are you willing to accept? And as Chris said, if that is no longer an option, and these are the two remaining options that DPW has for road treatment, here's your two options, which one are you now willing to accept? To have potholes for five years, because you don't, you won't accept anything but a new road? Well then, that means you accept the deterioration along the way. So, public hearings are great for people who participate to voice their concern or their support. But if they have a concern, they also have to have the responsibility to tell us what they are willing to accept. Because we have to make a decision. We have to make a decision. And, and because we have to keep the budget in mind, that might be the default that we take, is the budget part of it. Unless people tell us, "I absolutely know, and yes, we're willing to accept potholes on our street for five years until we get a new road." I mean, that's just an example, cuz we're talking about chip seal, but that can be for anything. If you're opposed, fantastic, and you might not have a solution. And that's also part of it, but it's us, then it's up to the people at this table and the department head to make the decision. If people don't wanna help us make that decision. And that's, it's tough for everybody, cuz it's a no-win, that's a no-win right there.
And that's the thing, if people, anyone that saw the presentation that Direct Public Works did, it takes, at our current, the, the cost of paving, which continues to go up, and the current amounts that were budgeted for, it will take us 31 years to go through and replace every single road. I do not know of a single paving method that will last 31 years. I don't know, some of the roads in Rome are pretty good, but, still. But I don't know of any modern paving techniques that last 31 years. So there, it's either, once again, people are willing to pay more money to do that, which I'm anticipating that's not high on their agenda. Or you have to scale back on certain options. If the, if the, you know, the town decides they want, I mean, I, but I think, I think it's great. I think, I think we could do, we could definitely do a much better job of advertising, especially through our new social media measures, when the Public Works Director is doing the overall paving presentation for the year. But I'm not in favor of individually noticing every single abutter that happens to travel down a road that's important to them that year. Board's pleasure. Phil, would you like to chime in?
So, for the record, every home received a letter informing them of chip seal. What it was, the follow-on place for information. Could call or email us, got zero calls until it actually started. It was not every, not every resident of Jericho showed up here. I had numerous calls, and no offense, Joel, but someone, one woman said, she said, "You've done what I've been begging the police to do for 20 years, you've got people to slow down on this road." So, I, yes, there were a lot of people here, yes, they were unhappy with it. But I don't think that's indicative of every single person who lives on that road. You know, I took the directive from the Board of Selectmen to save money. I took that seriously, and that's what the intention was here, but it goes beyond that. Because of the statistic that has been mentioned, it would take us 32 years to pave every road in town. I don't see myself getting much money, much more money for my budget anytime soon. I don't know, if you guys are sitting in different Budget Committee meetings than me, but there really wasn't much of an appetite to throw me a couple hundred thousand dollars more. So, the intention with this is to establish, establish a pavement preservation plan that is going to take, right now, as it sits, about eight years, to touch every road in town, to get some form of treatment on it, to just stabilize it where it's at. And then, begin the process of reconstructing the roads that are just too far gone. What that allows us to do is save us a lot more money in the long term, because the previous technique of worst-first is just a very reactive approach that just is not gonna get us anywhere, we're just gonna keep playing the whack-a-mole game and never get ahead of it. So, chip seal is only one of, I'd say probably five or six tools I have in the bag. It is not one that works on every road, it will not be used on every road. There are roads that are at a point where they're not ready for shim and overlay, but they're far past the point of where just a crack seal job and a micro-surfacing on top of it is gonna take care of it. This is just something that kinda stabilizes the road, holds it together, and allows us to keep moving forward to get all the other roads taken care of. As I said in the meeting, you know, I confused more notification with enough notification. And I will take the hit for that. And it is my intent that, before we start any paving program for the year, there will be a sandwich board set out on every road, telling them, and we'll have a meeting onsite, and I'll be explaining what's gonna happen, road by road. But it'll be a localized thing, not in the Town Hall, not a notice, well, it'll be a notice meeting, but it'll be onsite, just explaining to people what we're looking at. We're also starting a newsletter for the Public Works Department so that we can keep people in the loop. Just a weekly release, telling them what's going on, what's going on that week, what's coming up in the next few weeks, so people who care to be informed can be informed. But, I guess, this is just something that would restrict my ability to keep costs under control and to address the issues of this town, because it's not just the residents who fall into these potholes, it's my guys going over there with the snowplow trucks, and it's our equipment being broken more than anyone else's. When you're going down a road that's just beat to piss, it's just not gonna hold the truck together, it's just, it hurts us more than anyone else. And if we don't address these things, they just get worse, so it hurts us more than anyone else. So while I, I fully appreciate the residents' concern and input on that, there's also other considerations for the long-term planning of this town that needs to be taken into account. And I, I guess for me, as, you know, a dumb farmer, I didn't really think people, that would be the biggest concern in their life, the texture of their road surface. But, it's not done to pick on anyone or do anything like that, it's to address a problem and it's in an attempt to come up with a long-term solution. So, I, it's the board's, you know, pleasure, whatever you wanna do, but it hinders my ability to keep costs down and address a long-term problem, if we do remove that ability, so.
I have a question. This pavement preservation plan, is that like a road by road, what your plan is?
Basically, what we've done is we've broken the town up into seven districts. It's essentially the plow routes. And we can save a lot of money by targeting where we're doing roadwork. So if a paver's in town and he doesn't have to mobilize three times, if he's just moving from road to road, that saves us a lot of time. So, currently, we've been able to get two of the zones completed last year. We have one that we're, it's the biggest one in the Rock Rem and Ball area, that would be the focus for this year. And we're just going zone by zone, so that at least we're hitting the pause button for two to five years is what we're hoping for. And then, the rest can be addressed through micro-surfacing and crack sealing.
So I guess my question is more detailed than that. So, is that published somewhere and can residents go look at this preservation plan and say, "I'm in this zone and this is the treatment that is planned for that zone," so that we know we can, you know that you may have a different kind of educational form that you have to do for those residents, as opposed to somebody who's gonna get a different type? Because the form that, or the presentation that Phil did a few months ago was great. or the presentation that Phil did a few months ago was great, but how does that apply to my road? Am I getting the crack seal? Am I getting the chip seal? Because I think people didn't understand what chip seal was until they got it. And then they were like, whoa, wait a second, that's not, not anything that we understood. So this preservation plan, pavement preservation plan, is it by, can I see it? Like, is it posted? And then if, can I look at my street and see where I fall and what your plan is for that? Is it that detailed?
So, yes and no. It is not posted. However, so we're working with the mapping people from the engineering firm for Stormwater and just trying to make this funnel into another project that we're doing so the funding would be covered to handle that. It's mostly by geographic area. The the specific treatments, like I'm figuring that out right now for Rock Run and Ball Road, because the roads just basically, especially after the rain we had, there's a certain amount of degradation that takes place in just 365 days. So for me to commit to tell you that you live on, you know, Pillsbury pasture, and you're going to get a shim and overlay in four years, we're not in that detailed yet. But it is in four years on Pillsbury pasture, your road, your roads will be addressed. And the specific ones would be what we'd cover in that onsite meeting, what the actual, because what I'm doing right now is bringing contractors out, showing them what my plan is, and they're like, eh, I wouldn't do that there. I'd do this there, you know, getting their input on it. And just identifying problem spots that have come up. And to be able to tell you in detail what's going to happen for the next eight years on 174 lane miles of road is a little tricky. So the geographic areas are set for the timeframe, but the specific roads and specific treatments aren't set until basically the year of the treatment.
And then your plan is to then do a road by road notification and education for those residents to explain to them what your plan is? Is there any room for dissent at that point?
Clearly. I thought that's what this was. I, I think there's people with questions and that, and that's certainly reasonable. And just to back up to the chip seal, I'm not seeing, at least in this upcoming year, where it's going to be a straight chip seal. There's no roads that are going to be like that. It'll be a chip seal with a micro surfacing overlay that unfortunately will increase our costs in it, but should address most of the issues with regards to loose stones and not liking the color of the road. Did I get that right? I'm trying to remember that complaint specifically. You know, that should take care of a lot of it. It's not like I'm not listening. So, you know, we have, there are things that can be addressed. But I mean, are they legitimate concerns? Or are they just, I don't like the color of my road? And I think that's the question that has to be asked when we're making decisions like this.
Thank you for the update.
Thank you.
I think if it's slowing traffic down, I think we should do every road.
Do a three quarter grab.
Okay, before we get into our presentation software, thank you Paul for just, this is my last meeting with all of you's department heads, but I will, I'm sure I'll be seeing plenty of you up until Election Day because we still have a lot of stuff going on. But it's been an absolute pleasure working with all of you. You know, forever ends up sitting in these seats afterwards, you'll know that at least 50% of the town is mad at you all the time. So it's, it's, it's a tough job, but it's valuable, needs to be done. I appreciate those that are continuing to do it and those that are stepping up for either reelection or those that'll be filling it, filling any vacancies that happen. So thank you. It is important. And you won't offend me when you roll your eyes when you see me walking to be in the audience, wondering what I'm here for and what type of trouble I'm going to cause. So, and I'm sure I'll be seeing all of you plenty. All right. So now we'll open it up for the presentation that Pedro has for our permitting software.
Does it be that way to stay here?
I see. Everybody else is living.
Before you leave, I just have to ask you one quick thing.
Can you send me a text when you do yours? I'd like to come back. I guess Caitlin's not here. I just want to go down and check and come back. Not that I'm not interested in it.
No, that's okay.
Sorry, I'm trying to just patch together a few different systems altogether. But hopefully. We can just have them say something just so I can be.
All righty. Josh, Peter, can you guys say something? Can you guys hear me? All right, give us one second. We don't hear you.
Hey, does, could everyone just check the back of their microphone for 15? I don't think I have 15 out. I just need to make sure. Can we just have him talk for a moment?
Can you talk for one second again, Peter?
It's supposed to be coming over this, but it's not. Why not? Try speaking again. Can you hear us right now? Sorry, I haven't done a Zoom meeting since 2021. So. Try one more time.
We're trying to get the audio there.
I'm not sure. Because it's the out is the problem. Try now. No, that's not working.
Try now again.
I'm sorry to keep taking your computer. I hate to do that. Sound settings. No, not, not this. There we go. Try now. We can hear you, but the problem is it's not connecting to the system. Try, just, if you could just keep talking for a moment, I apologize. I can't find the speakers, the problem. Yeah. I was not interested in this. I go down to this. I think the audio settings are still right there. Oh, for Zoom. Oh, yeah, that might be. Oh, yeah. Try changing to the Jabra. Yeah. All right.
There we go.
Sorry.
All righty. So we're going to go ahead and start with the presentation. My name is Pedro Vila. I am the building inspector with the Town of Kingston. And we have Cloud Permitting. We have Josh Carpenter and Peter Rottenberg. They are the professionals with the software. And without further ado, I'll let you be, guys.
Thank you so much for the introduction. So what I typically try to do, guys, first and foremost, thank you so much for the time and giving us the opportunity to demonstrate our permitting software. I am Josh Carpenter. And before I pass it off to Peter to kind of dive into the demonstration here, I just want to set the stage, want to leverage who we are, what we do, give you guys an understanding of what we want to accomplish in the next maybe 30 minutes or so, and kind of bring some conversations that we've had with Pedro in the past to fruition and run with the Monday here we have. So with that being said, just to again, give us an idea of kind of who we are, what we do high level, Cloud Permit has been doing this for 13 years. We are solely focused on small and midsize municipalities that are very reminiscent of Kingston. I think top of mind, Alton, that is a municipality that we're currently doing business with. I know how reminiscent of Kingston they are. But we have a few different offerings. So what I want Peter to kind of focus on today is we want to dive into building, code enforcement, as well as planning and zoning, better understand your processes in place and see how we can develop a partnership and kind of make your guys' lives easier moving through the process when it comes to permitting. So with that being said, I'll kind of pass it off to Peter. Let me go ahead and make you the co-host, Peter.
Great. Thank you.
Let me know if that switched over to you.
Sure thing. And everyone can hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Wonderful. Great. Hey, guys. So my name's Peter Rottenberg. I'm the VP of Sales with Cloud Permit. So me and Josh work with communities all over the country to, to bring them on board with Cloud Permit. What I want to do is give you guys just a quick overview of the components of our software or the modules that we proposed to Pedro. So really, we're going to be giving you just kind of a demonstration on overall how the software works and kind of playing the hits in terms of the most critical features to, to the operation there. Cloud Permit is a full featured, what we call community development software. So it handles everything from building permits, planning and zoning applications, code enforcement cases, complaints, investigations, everything like that. The software is split into kind of broadly two sides. There's the public facing component where folks can actually apply for permits online. They can submit applications, book inspections with Pedro, submit planning and zoning applications to your planning and zoning boards, as well as manage, you know, code enforcement complaints, actually submit those online. The software also has a staff facing component where Pedro and other staff in, in the organization can process these applications, track payments, do inspections out in the field on a phone or a tablet or something like that, do any reports that are required, and a whole host of other things. So of course, in the short time we have, we, we're not going to show you every little thing that our software does, but we're going to kind of focus on kind of the key, most important points. Probably what I'll do is just go through this. If anyone has questions as we go through, feel free to ask, but I'm going to try and go through reasonably quickly. And then, you know, we're happy to stick around as long as you all need to get any questions that you have answered. So what you're looking at on my screen here, this is the public facing component of Cloud Permit. So this will be put right onto the Kingston website. This is where a member of the public who wants to submit an application will be able to do so online through your website. Now, one thing before we dive in that I want to make very, very clear, we've got over 500, you know, small to midsize communities across the country using our software. We do not have a single client where 100% of the applications are submitted online. Typically, when we're meeting with councils and boards, one of the first questions we get is, you know, what happens to the folks who prefer the old school way of doing it? And they, they want to come in and chop it up with the staff at the front desk and submit an application that way. Not to worry, those folks can still continue to get service in that manner. But it's going to, for the applicants who do want to apply online, it's going to be a great service for them that makes their life easier. Certainly, it's going to clean some small process issues up for Pedro, incomplete applications, stuff like that. So again, just to make very clear upfront, I'm going to show you how an application can be submitted by the public online, but staff can still continue to manage over the counter applications as needed, and they can still be tracked in our software really nicely. So public users who want to use this, they do create an account when they first sign up. It takes 30 seconds. It's very easy. It's like any app you've ever used on your phone. Our barometer for this is Amazon. If someone can go on Amazon and, you know, buy a water bottle or something like that, you know, they can, they can use Cloud Permit, right? So this is very familiar to the public user. I won't go through the account creation process. I'm going to log into an account that's already been created. So let's say I'm a builder. I want to apply for an application. When I log into my account, the first thing I'm going to see is any outstanding items I have to do so that my application can move forward in the process. This is typically payments that need to be made or additional documents that someone like Pedro needs to be able to approve an application or issue a permit or something like that. All of this automatically double taps with email notifications. So someone, you know, getting a building permit or developing land is going to get email notifications when they have to make a payment or submit additional documents or when their permit's ready. And one of the things this is going to do is really just give Pedro more time in the day, less inbound phone calls, less people asking for updates, means he can get more inspections done, spend more, I'm a baseball guy, you know, more, more, more higher leverage innings on, you know, the customer, customer service side, which is, which is really good. Couple other neat things here. A builder who's got a permit issued simply from their phone or their tablet at home, at the job site, wherever it might be, can click on the permit and schedule an inspection with Pedro online. So you can see, you know, in this example here, we've passed our first inspection, but we failed our second inspection. So maybe I want to request, you know, Pedro to come back out and, and show them that I've done everything properly now. I can click this button and simply pick a date and time that Pedro has available. And I just submitted an inspection request. And you guys will see in a couple minutes where that pops up for Pedro and how he can manage stuff like that. For people who want to submit applications online, it's a very simple process. So they're going to start by clicking Create a New Application. Now, based on what you're using our software for, we're going to have different aisles set up here. So kind of think of this as like almost like a digital shopping cart, right, to be able to go get a building permit or a conditional use permit or whatever it might be. I'll do a building permit here. So the applicant's then going to be taken into a nice, simple workflow to set up their application. Basically, what the system's doing is asking them to identify what they want to go do. So we're going to have this all set up around, you know, the different permit types that, you know, Pedro and, and, and the town do. I'll do kind of a simple new single family dwelling project here. Give our project a quick name. And then we're going to pull up a map. And this is one of the most important parts of our software. We're going to do a live integration between your GIS mapping data, your parcel information, property information, and cloud permit. One of the challenges for any building department is incomplete applications. And it often is kind of a customer service friction point. And it creates a lot of extra work for Pedro just to manage these incomplete applications, help people get through it. So this GIS integration does a lot of great things, but one of them is it makes life really easy for the applicant. So they simply identify their property or their parcel, kind of a Google style search. And what Cloud Permit is going to do is it's going to pull in all the key information about that property, and then later auto fill that onto any forms or documents that they need to submit. So by this point, when the applicant's just creating their application, they've already given us all the property information. We collected, you know, name, email, stuff like that when they created their account. And all they're going to have to do to submit their application is whatever's left over. Provide some drawings, maybe, you know, provide Pedro with the construction value or the area of work so that he can calculate the fees properly, simple stuff like that. So the applicant creates their application. This system, based on the application type, is going to tell the applicant what more they need to do to submit that permit. So for example, identifying, you know, just clarifying who the property owner is, filling out any forms that are required. And this works like ordering a pizza, right? Any of the forms with an, form fields with an asterisk you need to fill out, or you're not going to be able to order your pizza. Same thing with Cloud Permit. So the applicant can say, you know, it's going to be a nice big house with a nice big garage. And we keep most of these form fields non mandatory when we do these demos. You get the point, right? But we're going to collect any of the information that the town or Pedro needs to calculate fees or just keep track of what's what on these projects.
Quick question on that note. Can the town, being, fields are required? If you don't have them, you cannot proceed?
Absolutely. So what we do during the implementation of the software is we're going to go through all this with you. We're going to set everything up, your forms into the system. These are of course sample forms from another client, you know, so they probably don't look exactly like Kingston forms. But we're going to set up your unique configurations into the software. And then Pedro, you'll be able to manage these things on an ongoing basis. So if you need to change things around, you can, you could do so without our support. Okay. So we're going to get all that stuff filled in. Okay, so we're going to get all that stuff filled in. The final thing here is the applicant might be asked to upload some drawings or documents. Now, if this was a planning or zoning application, it's really the same process. Maybe instead of a construction drawing, we need a traffic study or, you know, a geotechnical report or a, you know, a lighting plan or something like that, right? So the system's going to tell the applicant what they need to provide, right? And it'll be unique to the type of project that they're applying for. So in this case, the applicant's just going to upload the correct documents to make sure it's done correctly and all the records are managed properly. They're just going to kind of connect the dots here and say, what documents what? So that they match with these requirements up here, really self-explanatory. And if you notice in the top right-hand corner, it now allows the applicant to move to the next step of the process, sign off their application. And that just takes a second to process the digital signature and they can click the Submit button. The applicant's then going to immediately receive an email confirmation that their application was received. And staff, you know, I'll say staff broadly, staff will receive email notification and a system notification that you'll see in a moment that there's a new application for them to go review. One last note that I want to make before I kind of switch over to the staff side. The way this system's set up, the applicant, there's no save buttons. So an applicant can create an application, you know, on Monday morning like we are today, figure out what they need to do and they could spend the next day or two kind of putting everything together as they get it all set up and organized before ultimately submitting. This is one of the really nice things about Cloud Permit. It really educates the applicant what they need to do and it gives them a workspace where they can put all this stuff together before eventually submitting it. Okay, and just to show you guys... This is an example of an email notification that sends out of the system, right? So the applicant gets that right away, nice and simple. Okay, next thing here is the staff side of the system. So I'm going to log in as if I'm Pedro or, you know, a member of staff in Kingston using the software. The first thing staff see when they log in is their to-do list, basically. So this is going to show staff if they have to review an application, approve, issue, assign, you know, really anything like that that's in the system. Down here, what we're going to see is different widgets for different modules. So for example, that inspection that was requested online, Pedro can see that there's two inspections that have been requested that he needs to schedule. So he can go over to the inspection scheduling tool here. These are the inspections that have been requested and he can just drag and drop these into his task list for that day. And then what he can do is send email confirmations out to those people that their inspection requests have been confirmed, right? So nice and simple, very professional. What's also neat here, again, someone calls Pedro and says, hey, are you able to come over on Thursday evening or Thursday afternoon, I should say, sorry Pedro, I didn't mean to blow you up there, and do an inspection? You know, Pedro or maybe someone else who's picking up that phone call can manually input that request into the system by clicking this Add button here and finding the project. So it's nice and simple. And again, that dual stream's really important, right? We want people to do everything online. If that's what they want to do, we want you to have a way to manage the kind of more traditional over-the-counter, over-the-phone stuff as necessary. Okay, as we scroll down here, we're going to see some widgets for some of the other modules that we offer. This is our code enforcement widget. So we have a separate online complaint portal for the public, okay? And this does not require a member of the public to create an account or login to use. So let's say Pedro is my neighbor and he hadn't mowed his lawn and I wanted to submit a complaint. I could type in Pedro's address here. And again, this is all integrated with your mapping so that there's no, you know, I can't submit a complaint for the next town over, right? It's going to be geo-fenced, which is really nice. I can click Create a Complaint, pick a complaint type, put in any information that's required. Some communities allow anonymous complaints, some don't. So this example, there's, you know, no personal information required. I'll say Pedro mowed your lawn.
Don't throw it on the ball.
And let's be submit. Yeah. And if you want, you can turn these things really easily as mandatory fields and no longer accept anonymous complaints. So it's totally up to you, it's really easy to change in our system. As we scroll down on the home screen here, we're going to see some other widgets as well. This is the first big tool you're going to see from our Planning and Zoning Module. I really believe our company is just miles ahead when it comes to planning and zoning software. This tool here is really neat. This is going to show whoever has access, basically what meetings are upcoming, where planning and zoning applications are going to be heard, right? So this, you know, these are just some example meeting names here, but this could be, you know, Kingston Planning Board, Kingston Zoning Board, Kingston Select Board, you know, whatever it might be. So staff are going to be able to process these applications inside of Cloud Permit. And then the staff who need it are going to have this nice heads-up display as soon as they log in that shows them that, you know, this meeting happened in the past, but I'll just use it as an example here. You know, at the upcoming, let's say, Planning Board meeting, we've got five applications on the agenda and staff can really easily, I'm sure some of the folks in this room sit on some of those boards, staff can really easily, for the board members, click a button and produce a meeting package for that meeting. So it's going to take all the key documents in each application and it just takes a second for the system to put this big document together here. Give this a minute. It's going to put together a PDF that they can send out to you all so you can kind of look through each of the submissions for that week's meeting. And I'll give you an example of what this looks like here. We'll set this up to look like a, you know, town in Kingston document, right? With the agenda looking the way you want to, but really the important thing here is the content, right? So it's going to pull out all these, you know, submissions all into one document, all the forms, all the staff memos, all that fun stuff. Couple other neat things on the Planning and Zoning side, I'm going to open up a...
I have a member, I have one of the select board members that have a question.
Sure.
Yeah, hi. So the part where you were talking about a meeting and it sends a package, that's part of the permitting software, right? Is that part of that? Yes. So that...
Yeah, so I'm having a bit of trouble hearing you, but I think you were asking, is it part of the permitting software? So we're proposing three modules, so our system is four modules in total. We're proposing three of them, Building Module, Planning and Zoning Module, Code Enforcement Module. The modules all work together, right, through our software? And this is part of the Planning and Zoning Module.
Got it, okay, thank you.
Yep, no problem. Couple other neat things on the planning software. You know, as these applications move through the approval process, typically the boards are putting some conditions of approval or development conditions on these applications. Staff can track those conditions, right? So when they issue a zoning permit or something like that, it's very clear to the applicant, you know, what they need to do, landscaping requirements, planting trees, widening roads, impact fees, stuff like that, okay? What we're also going to do is make it really easy for staff to manage the public notification process. And this is a really critical component of any planning and zoning workflow. So staff with the click of a button can produce, for example, a notice of hearing document that goes out to, you know, typically the local paper, the neighboring properties, maybe up on your website. So again, just making it really easy for staff to generate these documents out of the software and, you know, allowing them to reorient their time to the more important tasks. And then using that really nice integration we have with your GIS system, staff will be able to easily and accurately produce mailing lists. So this system here, what it's doing is it's basically saying, okay, pull all the addresses for every property within, in this example, three hundred feet of the property line of the subject property. It's going to pull all that mailing information in and then allow staff to export that to an Excel sheet where they can print off mailing envelopes or labels. Or if you're a community where it's the applicant's responsibility to do the mailouts, then, you know, you can create an accurate list for them in a matter of seconds, which is really, really nice. So these are just a couple neat features of the Planning Module. The other thing that's nice about Cloud Permit is it allows staff and anyone with access to the information to get a more holistic view of property within the community. So each piece of property has what we call the Property View and this is where we can see anything current and historic that's ever happened on a piece of property. So if staff are answering a real estate agent's question or staff are working on a building permit and they want to see if there's an open code enforcement violation on the property, right? In a second, they can pull that property up and see what's going on, right? Or what's happened in the past, which is really, really convenient. It saves staff a ton of time looking for stuff. And this is also, again, answering the question from before where these modules all work really nicely together. You know, all this hard work goes in to approve the development of a piece of land during a planning process. We want to make sure then that building permits get issued correctly so Pedro could see that there is a landscaping condition on this property and when he gets the building permit, he's got to see the right, you know, landscaping components on the site plan or pick up some additional fees or whatever it might be, right? So not only does this allow kind of each department to work more efficiently and offer better customer service, it also allows the departments to work more together in a more streamlined manner, which is really important. Okay, a couple other neat things. Down here, this is where staff are going to be able to easily search and sort to find property and applications. So this is basically the database. So if staff wanted to, you know, or anyone with access to the system wanted to find something, they can do a true Google-style search through the database. So for example, I could put in Josh's first name and anything with the name Josh is going to pull up or I could search for a permit number. And this might seem like really basic functionality, but when you don't have a piece of software like this, staff end up combing through email and filing cabinets and a million different systems trying to find information. So one of the really big benefits for Pedro and anyone else using this is it's really going to consolidate everything together. I also want to show you guys sort of some of the documents that Cloud Permit can create. Again, I just don't have time to show everything our software can do and if you guys want us to come back and give a more, you know, deep-down demo, we'd be more than happy to do that. But Cloud Permit's going to create all the key documents. So this is a permit that's already been issued, so Pedro would have used the system to actually generate the permit. Cloud Permit's going to track all the financials, all the fees. It's going to create all the invoices and receipts, email those out automatically to applicants, store all those documents in one place. It's also going to generate things like building permits. And I want to give you guys just kind of an example of what, you know, a building permit in a month or two could look like in Kingston, right? So this is an example of a building permit that our system generates automatically once Pedro's done his review. So what the builder, the contractor, the homeowner gets is a really nice package of information with all the, you know, with all the property information or sort of a table of contents. They get the actual building permit here, right? We put QR codes on all the building permits so Pedro could go up to any job site, zap this with his phone and do an inspection right there on the job site, really quickly out in the field. It's also going to give the applicant an inspection guide. So based on the specific things they need to do on their project, it's going to tell them what inspections they need to do, in which order, and any specific instructions for that specific inspection. So really just good customer service, again, very professional. It can also include any of the proof drawings or documents. So typically what we hear from contractors is they love the permits. It's lots of really good information for them and makes it easier for them to do their end of the job and keep Pedro happy when inspections come, which is really, really nice. So I think we had about twenty-five minutes, so I'm going to pause here. I've shown you a little bit of each module and a couple of the key workflows like the submission, a couple of the key documents it creates. I'm sure there's plenty of questions, so I'm going to pause here and I'll turn it over to the audience for anything you want to see. I'll show you or any questions you have that you want answered.
This is Lori again. So I guess my initial question is what data input is required to get this up and running? Other than, I understand the permit request is, I mean, that happens, but in that you need the GIS data, but is there other data needed from the town to make this fully functional or is it just as we go?
So I'm just going to repeat the question because the audience, you sound very far away, but I think the question was what data is needed from the town to get this started? And you mentioned the GIS. So the GIS is actually a live integration that we do. So you guys just continue to update your GIS system as you do today and all that data comes into Cloud Permit without you guys having to lift a finger. What we'll do to get the system set up at the beginning is we're going to have Pedro and the other departments using the software send us their forms, their violation letters, their reports, their, you know, everything like that. We're going to build that into the system for you. Historical data, Josh's data can port included in this?
It is not, no. That's where I was going to go with this, is they're not moving off of an existing system, so it was not necessary.
Yeah. Now, what staff can do is manually enter or kind of mass import historical information into the system. So if you want to take a bunch of old paper files and stuff like that and digitalize them into Cloud Permit, Cloud Permit makes it really easy to do that. Honestly, what a lot of our clients do is hire summer students to come in and, you know, maybe they can hang out with Pedro in the morning and do some inspections and then they sit in a room and do some data entry in the afternoon, right? You know, but you can begin to kind of move to a more paperless environment by digitalizing those old paper records into Cloud Permit and maybe just to kind of organize that a bit, fill out those property views with historical records.
Great, thank you.
One thing, I apologize, we should have covered this at the beginning that I just wanted to note as well. Just a couple pieces of context sort of on our model. Cloud Permit has unlimited user licensing, so there's no cost to add additional users on the staff side or the applicant side. So as many people can use this or have access to the information within the system as you guys want at no additional cost. Each module that we're proposing comes complete with all features, so there's really no extras, right? We don't have a sales model where, you know, we release a little new feature and then you have to pay for it. Our model's really around bringing new clients onboard, so we want you guys to be happy. We want you to be really successful and we're never done building the products or adding new features, new functionality and all year round to make the system better so that, you know, hopefully you never leave us.
So this is Lynn Merrill, I am the Planning Board Chair. My question is, what is the average onboarding timeframe? Keeping in mind that the majority of our personnel right now is very part-time.
Yeah, so we're typically looking at a four-to-six to four-to-eight week timeframe to implement these three modules. Typically with a city the size of Kingston, we're closer to that four-week mark. Now, this is an eighty-twenty type of project, but we're doing eighty percent of the work and twenty percent of it is meetings where at the beginning of the project, we're just going to kind of review all your requirements and kind of understand what you guys are looking for. We're going to go away, set everything up, right? And then we'll come back in and do some training and testing with the staff before we turn everything on. We go module by module. So typically in a project like this, we can start with the Building Module, then the Code Enforcement Module and then the Planning Module. So we're not taking staff off the board for Cloud Permit stuff en masse, all at once, for days at a time. It's a couple hours here, a couple hours there, over about a four-to-six week timeframe.
Do you have any idea what the total number of hours is estimated to be?
So typically, we're looking like total staff time, less than fifteen hours, yeah, in a project like this. Staff might choose to do some additional testing on their own, but assuming we're working with three to four staff, we're probably looking at, you know, somewhere around that fifteen-hour average.
Thank you.
And maybe if I can just kind of bolster that, my answer to that question just a little bit. As Josh had said at the beginning, you know, we exclusively work with multi-mid-sized communities like Kingston. Our largest clients are in the twenty-five to thirty thousand population range. Our typical client is anywhere from about twenty-five hundred folks in population to ten thousand. So everything that we do, the way we build the software and then certainly the way we deploy it is built with that in mind, right? We're used to clients where time is their most precious resource. Staff, folks like Pedro are wearing a lot of different hats. So we're really good at this and we're really good at, you know, doing this in a way that, you know, does not cause a big disruption to the day-to-day activities. Typically, what we want is, you know, within a meeting cycle or two with you all, Pedro to be able to come back and say, hey, the building permits can now be submitted online and code enforcement complaints can come in and we're just finishing up the Planning Module.
So, gentlemen, can you hear me okay?
Yeah, you sound really good.
Oh, I'm sorry, because I'm standing right, I'm sitting right beside your microphone, I think that's why.
Perfect.
Okay. This is Glenn Koppelman, one of the select board members. I've got two questions right now. One is just that this is the first time that I had heard that we were looking at the Planning and Zoning Module and I mentioned that to Lynn, our Planning Board Chair. And is this something that we had been thinking about? Because I thought it was only for building and code enforcement.
Yeah, I thought if, yeah, because they had the capability of doing this, we at least wanted to see it presented because we thought it could be incredibly beneficial to planning.
Yes, and actually in the meeting, last meeting on the board, Laurie actually made the suggestion to have include the Planning and Builder.
Okay, the pricing that we were looking at, did it include the Planning Module or is that going to be additional? That's, okay, okay, so we'll talk about that. I guess the other question is, all of this data, I'd like you to discuss the privacy of the data, where it's stored, security of it, what happens if there's a, you know, a major outage or flaw or something? I mean, is there, you know, what's the backup of the data? I mean, this is all critical stuff, so if you could just talk about that, I'd appreciate it.
Absolutely, thanks for the question. So I think usually with security, it's best to go kind of top-down. So first is sort of, you know, a critical question, who owns the data? So in our contract, it's very clearly spelt out that you own the data. We do not sell your data, we do not share your data, we don't do anything. The only data that we look at in the system is what's called usage data. So if you can still see my screen here, we want to know what people were doing in the system when they clicked the Support button, right? So that we know if there's certain things in our software that we can improve, right? And that's it, but we're not actually able to see your information in the system. But we're not actually able to see your information in the system, like your personal information or anything like that. We can't even see your passwords, right? Anything like that. So the second, the second piece is sort of like, where's the data stored and how's it stored? So we work with Google Cloud Services. We worked with them for 13 years as our cloud hosting provider. All the data stored in data centers within the United States, data never leaves the country. We have a three-tier or a triple redundant system, so our core data center is in Iowa. Our secondary data center is in South Carolina, and we have a third data center that only our chief technology officer knows the location of, that's also in the United States. So the system runs in mirror in all three data centers at the same time, so something happened at one data center, within a millisecond, it's up and running live at the other data center. Over the last 13 years, we've had less than nine minutes of total downtime on the system, which is spectacular, and we do daily backups of the data. So every 24 hours, the entire system is backed up. But because we have a triple redundant system, it creates a really strong level of security where, you know, three different data centers in different locations would all have to go down at the same time, and then we still have the, you know, daily backup to keep the lights on. The daily backup's industry standard with this type of stuff, so you're getting the best in that sense. In our 13-year operating history, we've never had a loss of client data or a breach of our system in any way. So something we're really, really proud of there. The next thing is what we call sort of application-level security. So what I've described so far is infrastructure, right? Where are the data stored? What are the data centers like? All that type of thing. The next thing is the actual application itself, the software. So we've got all the basic stuff, all the standard stuff that you would expect there. There's minimum password strength requirements for all users. You can't just say, you know, 1234 is your password, right? There's a certain level of security there. We're also doing virus scans on any document that comes into our system. So an applicant could submit their site plan online. That document's going to be virus scanned before it's accepted into our system, where then Pedro can download it to begin reviewing it, for example, right? So really high level of security there. All the data in our system is encrypted both in transit, so when the data's moving around, and then also at rest, which is what you want. And then the third thing is, we update the system once per month. So what we're doing, we have a whole team that's devoted to this, is we're keeping in front of any known security threats, right? Which is what companies like us are trying to do. So if there's a new known threat vector on our data center or our system, you know, we're doing updates all the time to keep the security, you know, to stay one step ahead. So the system's always becoming more secure over time. When we get down to privacy, who can see what? We have what's called role-based permissions. So the system can be established such that only certain users can see certain things. So for example, you know, we could set this up so that certain users are not able to see certain application or data types within the system unless they're permissioned to do so. That is one of the things that we're going to establish with the team as we set up the software. And just to give you an example here, staff can easily monitor and augment these security controls here. So this, what I'm showing you on my screen is the process of adding a new user, right? So we hire a new member of staff, someone to work with Pedro, let's say. This is where we're going to set up their user account, and this is where we're going to be able to control what they can do. Another common thing with our software is that there's what's called a lot of view-only users. So staff who have the ability to see information in the system, but they're not able to, you know, mess with records in a sense, right? They can't delete things that they shouldn't be able to delete, or download things that they shouldn't be able to download, or modify dates and times they shouldn't be able to modify, right? So staff can be set up with view-only licenses. And a common example of that in our world is often like Public Works, for example, where Public Works wants to be able to see certain property data, but you don't want them having the ability to necessarily issue a permit or do, you know, delete something or whatnot, right? So all that stuff's very well thought out in our system. And again, what I come back to is, you know, 13 years of doing this, specifically with local government clients, you know, you're asking the right questions. This is stuff that we put a lot of thought and effort and frankly resources into. Glenn, does that answer your question?
It does, thank you. So, I mean, you've answered the question, you've answered it well, and so you're telling us that there is no local storage of any of this data?
Correct, yeah, we're a cloud-based system, right? There's unlimited data storage. Now, you guys have the ability to download and back up the information whenever you want, so if you want to create local backups of it, you can do so, whenever you want and no additional cost.
Okay, that's a good answer. Thank you.
Glenn, one aspect of your question I apologize I didn't touch on is what happens, what happens if something does happen? So we have a whole, you know, as part of our cyber insurance, we've got, first of all, excellent coverage. On top of that, we also have disaster recovery plans that are documented, you know, all the stuff that a company like ours is supposed to do. So if something happens, you know, we're not running around like chickens with our head cut off. We have processes and standard operating procedures in place, in terms of how we communicate that to you, how we're going to, you know, reach out to our clients, how we're going to address those issues, and so on and so forth.
Okay, and going along with that, I guess, as part of our due diligence, have we, I guess I'm asking this of my colleagues and the staff, have we talked with any current users as references?
Not yet.
Okay, I would, I would ask that we do that before we make any final decision, just for comfort. Okay, thanks, guys, appreciate it.
Yeah, and Glenn, just a quick note on that. So most of our New Hampshire clients are fairly new, like within the last, you know, couple of months, so a lot of them are still kind of in the implementation process right now.
It doesn't need to be a New Hampshire client.
Yeah, we'll provide a kind of diverse selection of references from, you know, different states, and then also clients that have been with us a long time. I think it's good to get the perspective of like, is support consistent? You know, does the product really improve?
Sure.
Stuff like that.
Sure, absolutely.
Then we'll pull that stuff to Pedro and the rest of the team.
Yep, thank you very much.
Hi, gentlemen, this is Chris Bashaw. I'm wondering, does this interface with payment processing? So are they able to pay permitting fees on the site? Or if impact fees are due, they're able to pay that through the system? And if it does, how does it reconcile with our financial, either software or financial department? Does that get exported out? That has to be manually reconciled? Or is there a way to integrate that with whatever financial software that we're using?
Yeah, you were a little too far away for me to catch your name, but I did hear the question. So the question of online payment, so first, I just want to show you what it looks like when someone has to make an online payment. Now, this is our demo environment, so forgive the extreme example here of a $100 million video, but what we do is we'll integrate with whatever payment processor you guys want to use. The applicant gets an email notification, and they can actually get to this page just by clicking the email notification that says you have money due. Click on the screen, it'll look like this, where they make the payment. I'll share this, I'll have Josh share this with Pedro. This is a list of over 30 different online payment providers that we work with today. If you use one on this list, you get a right of pay. If not, it might take a little bit longer just for us to build the integration, but, you know, this is pretty inclusive, so this is, you know, most of our, it's very rare now that we have a client that doesn't use one on this list. So effectively, what Cloud Permit's been doing, right, is sub-ledgering, you know, these transactions to get that data back to your financial system. It's very rare that we do a live integration with the financial software. What financial software is the town using?
Nothing impressive.
I'm sorry, I couldn't do that.
Nothing impressive.
Okay, that's fine. So, you know, often, again, just the reality of working with small to mid-sized clients across the country, typically they're on older financial software that's not easy to do a live integration with. Frankly, on top of that, it's usually something from a security perspective. It's not best practice to do a live integration with, you know, something like Cloud Permit and your financial software that's got, you know, it's just an added layer of security, right? You don't do it usually.
Yeah, I wouldn't be comfortable with a live integration with financial software.
We call it a daily roll-up report. Basically, a CSV or an Excel-based file that staff will just basically click a button to produce at the end of the day, and that can get imported into the financial system to update your general ledger. Each B-type will establish with a, what we call like a GL or a quick code, so just, you know, saying what, you know, this application V is in your financial software. So when that report is uploaded into your financial software, it should reconcile everything really nicely. And then staff can modify this, so if these are created or GL codes are changed, this is something staff will be trained on how to do to, you know, to modify these things on an ongoing basis. And again, this is something we're doing with, you know, really every project that we do. You know, again, going back to what I said to Glenn, you guys are asking the right questions in that sense.
Thank you.
So the planning team had a couple of, next to me, they're all watching online.
Oh, great.
One of the things is, what do you do with an application that's not completed or is withdrawn? Is that still in the system, or is it removed from the system, or how is that handled? So we don't have a whole lot of still in hand?
We have statuses for those, right? So I'll just go back to the homepage here. These are all different applications in the system, and this kind of tab here shows you the status of that application. So it could be draft, or withdrawn, or whatever, right? So best practice is, everything that gets into the system stays in the system, right? So if an applicant, for example, is working on, let's say, a rezoning or a variance application, or conditional use permit, whatever it is, you know, a classic planning application, right? If they're working on the application and it's not complete, it stays in the system until it is completed, right? Or, you know, after, I think it's, it's like 280 days, they get an email notification that says, do you wish to continue working on your draft application? And if they say no, then it deletes that draft out. But that's not a submitted application, right? So it's nothing bad we're doing there. If an application's withdrawn for whatever reason, then we have a status for that that says withdrawn, and you can keep track. So, for example, planning staff could pull an annual report, for example, that shows how many, you know, subdivision applications were withdrawn. What's also neat about this, because we're tracking draft applications, staff can actually see kind of what the pipeline looks like, right? How many people are working on subdivision applications right now? How many people are working on building permit applications right now? You know, I've talked to a lot of clients who are very interested, and when I say clients, I'm talking, you know, planners and building officials who have really interested conversations with their boards and councils about, you know, what the pipeline of growth looks like. And certainly, one thing we're starting to see a lot more and more these days is economic development teams getting a bit more involved with this data and the system because, you know, a subdivision application comes in, they can kind of see everything, and go reach out to the applicant, and, you know, have a conversation with them, or whatever it may be.
So I guess you give us a lot of information, but just to make it simpler, somebody wants to do an accessory dwelling unit, move their parents in, all of a sudden, they and their parents will fight, they don't want to have their parents anymore, and they want to withdraw the application. So we really don't need to see it anywhere or do anything with it, it's withdrawn, but it doesn't really need to be on a status report anymore because it was never really submitted, or it was submitted and then they want it back, or they don't want to move forward with it. Is there a place for those so that they're no longer part of the queue?
Yeah, absolutely. So that would happen automatically? And just to give you an example, maybe just to add a little more to texture to this, I'm going to go over here and show you an example of our reporting tool. So one of the things we could look at here is, when we do a report on permits, we could just say, you know, submitted applications. So submitted applications would omit something that never got submitted, without staff having to do anything too complicated to, like, you could do that before, as you create a report in Cloud Permit, instead of pulling all the data and then kind of line-by-line going through it to kind of eliminate the stuff that doesn't go off.
Okay, another question, will this enter, is this a duplication of our records, our current property file record system? Or is it going to be coordinated with that as well, so things don't have to be re-entered or rescanned in? Can they just be placed over there? Or is there a way for it to work with the current record system? Or does the record system now become part of this?
That's a question I can't easily answer. I think that's something, honestly, that you guys are going to have to have a discussion about. You know, I don't know what all is in the record management system today. I mean, there might be stuff outside of the scope of building and planning and code enforcement in there, in which case, I can't tell you that this is going to replace it, right? It would augment it in that case. You know, typically, when our clients have historical databases or information repositories that go outside the bounds of what our software is doing, they keep them, right? And some of them will continue to feed that information from Cloud Permit into those, you know, historical, let's call them containers. Some of them won't. And again, that's something our staff can, implementation team can work through with you guys during the setup of the software. But that is a bigger question that I'm not comfortable telling you one way yes or no on this call. And I think, you know, in 10 years doing this with 300 clients, just myself, you know, it's something that probably you guys won't answer over time as you start to get more familiar with our software. And, you know, typically what happens is what you've used Cloud Permit for in year one starts to expand, you know, as the staff get more comfortable with the system and as you just get more creative with it. So I'm sorry if that sounds like a bit of a push, not my intention, but I just want to give you the most honest and kind of firm answer I can on this.
That's all valid, thank you very much. The last question they had was, would this include our communications to the planning board members, or will we use our existing email system?
Again, I mean, if you like the current system, then, you know, maybe Cloud Permit's producing the records, you know, the meeting packages for you, and then they're attaching those into the communication system, and that's what you guys like to do. Again, maybe that's something where at the beginning, we keep things the same, and then we sort of like move over to Cloud Permit as everyone gets more comfortable with it. I think it's one of those things that the staff and the boards are going to work together to find the best route possible on. Certainly, you can use Cloud Permit. With a lot of our clients, planning board members will be given access to this meeting management tool, so they can just, you know, from home, from your office, you know, wherever you are, you can go on and kind of see what's coming up at the next meeting. And this is a lot of dashboard, right? So, you know, if you log in today, there's five applications on the agenda. You log in tomorrow, there's six, right? And you can begin to open those applications up, review the documents, and start preparing for those meetings. So I think our clients that, you know, really maximize the value of the software tend to take more of a, they tend to approach in terms of who gets access to the software and who can see information in it. But that doesn't always mean on day one, everyone gets access to everything. Once, you know, with any change, we want to kind of do that in a, you know, an iterative manner where we kind of introduce things, you know, maybe not all at once, not a big bang. And that's why, going back to the, one of the first questions about how this is implemented, we don't turn all three modules on at one day, right? We go through kind of building, and then code, and then planning, or whatever order you guys want, but we take sort of a stepped approach. We've done a lot of these projects, we scraped our knees, you know, many times over the years, so, you know, we want to do this in a way that's not disruptive and give staff and folks like the board members just a chance to acclimate to it.
Thank you very much, and I do, because we do enjoy sleeping too. Thank you.
Fair enough.
All right. Any other questions anymore? No?
Well, guys, I really appreciate you taking the time to show us the powerful tools that you guys have available, and we'll be in touch once this is talked about, and we can get an idea of what direction we're going to take.
Perfect. Thanks, everybody, for your time and attention. I do owe you a few things, Pedro, references and a payment provider, so you'll have those documents to your short.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone. Bye now. Thank you so much, guys.
Thank you.
All right. So yeah, so once we get some of those other documents, follow up, have a chance to talk to some other communities, we can follow up on that again. Okay, next appointment, DPW director, talking to us about town hall renovations update.
I like how the planning, I like the planning, like how you can put like all the conditions in there to like track that.
Yeah. The name of the workshop I think is.
But it's also a nice one. But it's also a nice one.
Alrighty. So I had been charged with making some upgrades to the Town Hall, and done a fairly exhaustive investigation of the status of those things, so I just wanted to update the board and get some direction before we move forward. Here's some of the current issues that have either been brought up in discussions about spending ARPA money, or things that I've found that are a priority, in my opinion, to be dealt with. So the front stairs, everyone knows that one. Did get a quote back from an architect for a cost of $6,500 just to design that. Construction costs, and a lot of these are just estimates, because kind of need directions from the tower here before I go any further. But the estimates of construction are between $20,000 and $40,000 to have what we have going now. What's in the picture there is a precast set of stairs that has a brick facing on it. It's concrete, precast, faced with brick, and then the, the treads and the landing are done with granite. I found this to be very historically accurate, as the stairs used to be brick, now they're granite, so it appeases both sets of desires there. And there's a little better picture here. I can show you, maybe? So that would be an eight foot, that is not indicative of what we would get. That's a narrower one. I believe that's a five foot, so it would be eight feet, which would pretty much encompass the entire entryway as it sits. That, that curved or arched opening is eight and a half feet wide. So it would butt right into that. All right. Here's a little, no, it's not showing yet up there. Never mind.
Part of that precast option, that's, that's the cost?
That would be the cost of that set of stairs with six risers on it, delivered.
Installation as well?
No.
No, okay.
So what we would have to do in this instance, and again, we have subbase issues here, but I, again, I'm always seeking to deliver value to the town. So how I think this could be handled is, the Public Works Department could demo the stairs that are there currently, retain the granite that we have, get rid of the existing under-pieces that are there that were utilized, and just demo right back to the building wall. We would then do helical piles, which are basically giant screws that go into the ground. Those would give you a load rating based on the resistance that they get from the ground. So there's a big pressure gauge on there, and as it encounters resistance, as it goes into the ground, that would be, give you an engineered, load-rated figure. And then we would pour a pad on top of those. These would be set on top of that pad. So obviously, this would leave, this would be a change from what we currently have, and would, you know, hinder our ability to handle, handle the hundreds of people who come to our meetings. But this would, um... The, the common thing I'm hearing from people is just the Town Hall's kind of blah. You know, there's not, the, the front of it isn't really appealing. So this would narrow up the stairs, and we could do one of two things. Landscape both sides with bushes and flowers and things like that. Or we could even put a ramp, a handicap accessible ramp, from the side going up to this, and we'd have to figure out something with the stairs out in the entryway. But it'd be a little more appealing than making people drive around the back, go get in a slow elevator, and eventually get in here. So those are kind of our two options at this point. We can have an architect come in, tell you what I'm going to tell you, and not stand by, or me, who's going to be stuck with it anyway, so...
So not to belabor that, but for the second option, it sounds like the construction cost with having to put those in the ground and do the pad is probably going to be, the total cost might be close to 20K still, right?
I would say probably closer to 15.
Okay.
Not including the landscaping, but we do have money in the budget for landscaping, so that wouldn't detract from the ARPA funding.
Okay.
Also, the granite that's currently there could be used as curbing for any landscaping we do, so that would all be retained and utilized for projects in town.
Does that, does that come with any kind of guardrail?
Yes. So it would have similar metal guardrails to exactly what's there right now. And that is, uh... There is a, a cost associated with that, so I'm, I'm working with, this is a Shea precast out of Amesbury, and I want to make sure that the bricks are going to be a, a close match to what we have. I think the granite is pretty much your typical New Hampshire granite there, and that's what they put on all of it. We would have to seal this, so that it could be treated with de-icing materials, but that's a once a year thing. That would be kind of the only drawback, and I think, no matter what they come up with, whatever the architect would come up with, it would have the same constraints on it. But what this at least would cure is if everything went wrong, like the, the piles didn't work, the pad cracked, this would not break individually, this would just shift as a whole unit versus breaking individually, if the worst-case scenario happened.
Phil, do they provide a, um, a warranty, number of years, expecta, expected life, and so forth?
Uh, it has a one-year warranty on it for workmanship, but it's, they're precast stairs. I mean, it, it's pretty standard for that, but it's a one-year warranty is what they offer currently. All right. The oil tank that currently serves the Town Hall, nobody knows how old it is. I found a piece of paper documenting a leak test done in 1988. The other indications are that it's, at least, it was at least eight years old at that point. Most likely, it's older. If the leak test information is to be believed, it's about 2,000 gallons. Our, our oil supplier, Irving, will not fill that next year without a leak test or some sort of documentation, so showing that it is usable. It's also starting to cause furnace issues. Because it's buried so low, we have one furnace that's about 80 feet away from it, and it has delivery issues. The other thing is cold. Oil will come in, travel all that distance, and it creates kind of a clinker. I don't know what to call it, just kind of oil detritus at the igniter, so it has to constantly, Tammy could verify, there's many mornings she comes in, and the furnace is not working properly, and this is why. So this is, uh, this is an issue. I don't have much faith that that thing is 100%, since it hasn't been tested in so long, and it definitely is not something we should continue to use. So that's a picture of the stage. As we're digging into this, we've already done the LED upgrades, and this is kind of the next step with Unitil, is getting a full building energy audit. This is kind of the glaring one for me.
Can we go back to the oil tank?
Sure.
Do we know how much it costs to replace one, to get a new one?
We do not want to bury an oil tank.
We, I'm sorry, say that again?
What we, what we would want to do is... I'm probably going to have to have you hold all questions to the end on that one. Because I get into that in the next one. So it's, it's basically, we've got to figure out what we're doing with the HVAC system before we address the tank issue. So if you've ever walked down either of these two stairways, or you're sitting over there with the doors open, you can probably tell there's quite a heat differential in the back part of the building, and that would be because it's exposed masonry units that have not had any insulation on them. So that's typically why it's 20 to 30 degrees colder in that end of the building. Kind of pointless to do anything else, energy efficiency-wise, until we seal up that glaring gap there. Some of the other energy efficiencies, and again, I would defer to an, an energy audit to determine this, but the cupola is used very infrequently, enough so that we could potentially look at just blocking it off from the base, so that all, the heat that gets into the attic isn't just going right out of the cupola, and just allowing access from the roof to get in there. Some of the, some of the walls are missing insulation, and parts of the attic seem to have some gaps in there. So that would be getting a more rigorous energy audit than we've already had. Kind of the LED lights with the low hanging fruit. Now we get into the part where it costs us a little more money to get some answers. The HVAC issues. System's about 19 years old. It's two oil furnaces. The one in the picture there is the one off of the break room. That services the downstairs offices. It consists of three zones, none of which are balanced properly, none of which function properly. That size furnace never should have been used. The laundry list of issues with this system is daunting. I met with Dowling and two other contractors. He, his quote was, well, first off, it, it's in the top five for the worst ductwork he's ever seen in his life. And he said, I guarantee, this was a local guy who probably bid $20,000, and to do it properly with engineering and, and everything that needed to be done, it probably would have been closer to 150. So this is the, the easy option, and now we're, now's the time where we pay for it. So what this is doing is trying to push air to three separate areas. But what happens is, if one area calls for air, it runs at full bore to just push it to that area. The only one that's working properly is the town clerk's office. Everywhere else, it's just kind of dribbling out of the ducting. It doesn't have any force behind it. It's just, so the, the furnace is running essentially three to four times longer than it needs to, every time it's kicked on. We've had multiple office changes since this was put in place, so it's not set up to handle the way the offices are configured now. So basically, we have three options on this. And again, these are budgetary numbers. A complete rebuild of the HVAC system. Putting ductless systems, which is the mini-split systems some people know of, the Mitsubishi's. What that would allow us to do is have separate systems for each office, so that each office could kind of control their day-to-day air conditioning, heating needs. In that scenario, we would leave the existing system in place as a backup. So when we get really cold weather, or really hot weather, where the, the system, you know, the mini-split systems aren't keeping up, that would be left in place to, as a backstop for it. And then the third option is, do nothing.
I would assume that one of the advantages for the, for the mini-split system would be that it would be providing AC in the summertime.
Correct. And we have AC down there currently, but it is off of one condenser and another compressor, and that also is 19 years old. Both contractors said, after 15 years, you're essentially on borrowed time in a, in a large system like this.
What about in the large, common spaces like this? How would, thank you.
So one of the other key things is, as we're trying to reduce noise in this room, if you've ever sat in here when the AC kicks on, you know that you can't have a meeting in here when the AC kicks on, because it's so loud. So we got into those pretty heavy. These two ducts here, on either side of the room, are what provides air conditioning to the top floor. That other furnace that was just on there is what provides AC to the downstairs. So the ducting that was put in here is undersized. It's direct vented from the air handler, which you can see in that picture, but basically where that comes out of the wall there is a straight pipe. So you're getting all of the noise of the air handler, transferring the vibration and the noise directly out of that pipe, that is undersized. So you're getting basically two hits of the noise from the unit, and the, the velocity of the air that's pushed through a pipe that's too small, that makes it very loud. This one isn't a huge problem. There's basically some upsizing we can do on the duct, and they actually recommended a, a canvas collar that would basically cut down on the vibration from the unit. Potentially that, or raising the unit up, and putting a 90 in it to cut off that. So, I was just on that vein. And the electrical. This is one ceiling panel that I popped out to show what is going on up there, but in the ultimate of hypocrisy, it's right underneath the, or it's right above the permitting clerk, where we're telling everybody else to follow code, and we have this rat's nest going on. This is on top of ducts, under sprinklers, over internet cables, so it is truly a rat's nest. The other thing that prompted this investigation was a desire to have a generator at the Town Hall. As things are currently sitting, our panels could not handle, could not accommodate a generator. They're out of date, and they're not wired properly for that. So, um... I spoke with the electrical inspector, and received a quote, basically about $47,000 to upgrade both panels, and do what could be done to bring wiring into compliance where at all possible. So that number's up there. Server room. So we had some overheating issues. Most of that was caused by boxes be... The overheating was mostly caused by boxes being stacked in front of the vents, so the buildings and grounds guys are making that kind of their weekly checks to make sure that nobody's put anything in there. There is a larger physical security concern. If we do get a hot day, or something like that, and we need to prop that door open, we now have our server exposed to any of the public who walks in. So we're pretty much stuck with that being where it is, unless we want to rewire every bit of CAT 5 cable that's in here. As you can see, that's about 50% of them. You can see into the right of that draw, or that picture, so it's a good amount of rewiring. But one of the things that was proposed by one of the contractors was putting a, uh... We have a bathroom fan in there, essentially, just, you know, pulling air through, just keeping air moving. So we're looking at upgrading that as a minimum. The other thing would be getting rid of the door in the hallway, and putting a door in Susan's office, so that we're physically securing the server. And if there are, if there is overheating, the door can be open, but it's still in a secure area. The clerk's office. So during COVID, there was a, a stopgap measure put in place of a window on the door, so that they could handle multiple customers. But it's, the, a workstation isn't right there, and then people are coming in and out of the door. So it has been requested to put a third window, basically where the bulletin board is there with the neon paper on it in the picture. It would go that way, towards the door, and it would be similar to the, um... The higher window with the microphone on it next to the calendar. the higher window with the microphone on it next to the calendar there. Depending on which route we go with the HVAC system, this wouldn't have to be ARPA money, this could be done through capital improvement funds, but essentially, if we were to choose to, well, whichever route we go, we're going to have to shut down one side of the, the offices, do the work we need to do. So it would most likely be building and selectmen's side first, then we would move the town clerk and tax collector over there. Once that's completed, they would operate out of Torrey's window. Throughout that time, selectmen, building, zoning, all that would be up here for customer use. So while we're doing all that and gutting everything, this is the ideal time to put that, that window in and make that functional. And then we have facial work to do on the, on the exterior of the town hall. It's not as big a deal, the woodwork you see here, it's actually the cap that goes around the top of the building is the one that was done improperly, so that's going to have to be fully ripped off and re-flashed. But I'm meeting with a couple different contractors on this, just trying to make sure that we're, we're going down the right route, and I, I think it was certainly well intentioned what was done previously, but it was a Band-Aid that is falling off, so. Yes, and how, but it's, it's flashed behind it, especially in the front where it kind of steps up there, so that's going to have to be addressed.
I thought you said there's bad news.
I only bring love. So I guess what I'm looking for is just some guidance on, on this, because there's obviously multiple routes we can go. And before I start engaging engineers, or getting a contractor putting these together, because it's, it's going to be a big ask, you know, which, which route do we want to go?
What, which one requires the most urgent need for security reasons? Security as in safety of the building? Is the wiring more important than the HVAC? If we were to prioritize, how would you prioritize?
I mean, I pretty much laid them out in priority. The stairs, I think, are not even from a safety thing, just an aggravation point, but. Beyond that, the oil tank needs to go.
Yeah, I think that's our biggest one. If they're not going to fill it, then there's, then there's no heat next year.
I did a lot of begging and cajoling on that one to get them to continue.
There's also the potential liability. If that thing is leaking, we've got an EPA issue, and that's going to be a big problem.
Now, that being said, I do not believe it's, it's leaking.
Well, the, the, the use.
Yeah, the use has been fairly consistent. We're not, you know, if, yeah, I don't even say the words, but there is no indication at this time that the tank is leaking, but I don't think we should wait for that to happen either.
But I agree, it needs to go.
Yeah, so I guess, I guess my kind of ideas on some of it is that obviously you have the stairs issue upfront. I do like the idea of the pre-cast, and really, my biggest benefit of the pre-cast is if we're able to put in handicap accessibility, like a ramp that goes up to that as well, while addressing the landscaping issues and making it something that sits on a concrete pad, that's one, like you said, one thing, where if it shifts, it's not, the blocks aren't separating and moving. I think from a safety standpoint, a longevity standpoint, and having the ability to make that more handicap accessible, because the Allah Vader situation is terrible. I think that's important, obviously, the, the oil tank. So would an, would an option be to obviously seal off no longer, do we have to remove the old oil tank? Can we just continue to use it? Or can we cap and seal it? Or, but, and then if we went the ductless mini-split route, I know a lot of those are rated now to like, some of them are rated to 30 below. But it'll be, the moment we say, yep, mini, ductless mini-splits are going to solve all our problems, so we don't need the backup of the other, it'll be 45 below, like, in November. So can we put in a smaller oil tank for emergencies, or if we had to run that system?
So what the plan would be is if we were leaving the backup system, the oil system as a backup, we would have a tank in each of the furnace rooms.
So just like a typical homeowner tank, like 275?
Yes, probably a 330, but either that, or they would go in the, where the, the old coal bin was. I figured that's about as fire safe as any room. What I need to do, though, is dig more into the rules for that, and as this is a place of assembly and things like that, we need to figure out exactly what the ratings are, and one of the other options we have is converting to propane. But for that backup system, but that's a huge expense for something that's a backup. The furnaces are working. They've been serviced and taken care of all these years, so it's, any of the issues we're having are things that have been there for a long time. It's not, it's not an installation issue or maintenance issue.
So I mean, for, for me looking at it, just looking at some of these rough numbers, and I know they're very rough, until you get more detail. I think with the budgetary constraints that we have, the ARPA fund, you have a couple items that, that are on that list that can be taken care of with capital improvement funds, which I think is fantastic, but I think if we went the ductless mini-split system, did the pre-cast stairs setup, and addressed the electrical, and then put in like the additional oil tanks, we could be somewhere in the ballpark where we need to be with those remaining ARPA funds, and not, I, I think those are all options that at least solve some problems. I get the electrical, unless you want to tear apart the whole building and redo it, you can only get it as safe as you can, but obviously upgrading the panels and making it available for generators is a big thing. But I think we may be able to accomplish all these, all these priority items within that remaining funds that we have, that gets it to a standard that's at least safe, and that makes the town hall presentable, and look more usable again. And, you know, obviously, this is a building that get used every day. It'll be some tough times during the construction, when you're migrating those two offices together to share space during that time, but I, it's kind of, it'll, it'll be worth it in the long run, but just as a rough idea, those are kind of my ideas, go with, go with those models.
I have another question, Phil. If we drop the ceiling here to the bottom of those axed windows, where the, where the shades go, will that help us with the noise in the ear? It, I mean, if we're going to do the duct work anyways, right, assuming that that's going to happen with the HVAC system. I'm not taking, I'm not suggesting taking out the windows. I would not want to do that, but if we drop the ceiling so that it came to where you see the shades now, will that help us with our microphones? I mean, that seems to be a petty thing, but it's an issue.
If we go mini-splits, we won't need to redo the duct work.
Well, up here, you will, okay. So basically, these feed the AC, and those two vents behind you are what provide the heat.
Okay.
So the ginormous furnace that's opposite of Tammy's office, that feeds upstairs. So the two offices up here, and this room, and I think maybe like a little bit in Susan's office. It's, this is quite the, I should have called one of your detectives in, because it was quite the investigation we had going. This would be an easy fix to extend that out, and then have a proper-sized duct go back into the air handler. So it, I, again, I'm trying to keep this as unobtrusive as possible. I, I think what you're going to lose by dropping the ceiling is not going to get you what you want. You're still going to have a high ceiling in here. You still have wooden floors. You still have all these things that are kind of working against you on the sound attenuation part.
And the sound has been improved significantly. You know, technical issues with the mics aside, the quality of the sound is much improved. When you view meetings now on YouTube and watch them, I mean, you can hear people as long as the mics are working correctly, and the work that you did with the sound panels on the walls made a huge difference, and then putting a little bit of sound ending on the floor, you know, really added to that, so I think once the technology issue is solved with the.
And by the way, Paula texted me earlier, she's watching the meeting. She said, nobody cut out once by re, leaving these on the table.
Really?
Well, that's a good test.
She said, yeah, she said.
I got the same feedback from Glenn. He texted me to let me know that, even during the presentation, I realized.
Well, that's a good test.
But Adam also did tweak something.
He did do some stuff, but.
It might have been a combination.
So.
Well, I'm, I'm in line with what you.
Yeah, I think, I think, I think that's what we'd like to explore and get. I think that's where we'd like to go, because I think that can accomplish all the goals that we have within the confines of what we have. So if, if you can proceed with those measures to get us more detailed information, and obviously, sooner than later, because we need to, especially, this, this is stuff that I'm assuming is going to need to happen over the summer, prior to our next heating season, or at least. Yeah, I mean, a lot of it has to happen at the same time. If you're wiring in all this stuff for mini-splits, the panel needs to be able to handle it and accommodate it, and the wiring needs to be made safe.
So if we're going to make sure the electrical can handle a generator, are we then purchasing a generator for backup?
We're, we're looking into a grant for a generator.
Yeah, but if, while we're doing the panel work, to have it pre-wired and ready to go.
Yeah, yeah, sure, sure, sure. So can we reiterate what we talked about and what we agreed on moving forward?
So I guess my suggestion was based off of the presentation, the Public Works Director is going with the smaller set of stairs that are pre-cast, that will involve installing the pilings with a poured concrete pad over that, but we also want to look at the ability to put in a handicap accessible ramp, and then it would be augmented with additional landscaping, reclaiming the granite outside, and whatever landscaping measures we deem appropriate to take, take under that. For the HVAC portion of it, it would be, we'll, we'll abandon the use of the existing oil tank, because we don't think it'll be able to get recertified, and we don't want to bury another one, so we'd go forward with installing smaller capacity oil tanks in each of the furnace rooms, and leaving that system as a backup. Then we would install mini, ductless mini-split systems for the heating and cooling, to fix the existing stuff, but all the other duct work's going to remain in place as part of the backup system.
And those, the mini splits will be mainly for the office spaces.
Correct, yep.
Phil, didn't you at one point talk about going propane?
Yes. Here's the problem with that. So the BTUs you get out of oil versus propane, there's a big difference. Like, you'd get 80,000 BTUs out of a propane furnace, where you get 130,000 BTUs out of an oil furnace. Given the size of the room that we need to heat, and the demand that we put on it, where, like this morning, I showed up. It wasn't set, we don't set these for the department head meetings, so this room is typically left at 62 degrees, so I was able to crank that up to 68, and it was nice and warm in here. It was not this morning.
It's cold in here.
Well, it's probably kicked down.
Yeah, it probably went back to its default setting, but what I'm saying is with a propane one, you would have to oversize that furnace beyond what we have now, and you may need like two furnaces to meet that demand, so. I think unless we were looking at upgrading the entire system, I don't think it's worth switching to propane. I think oil, and I, I prefer propane because it's cleaner, it's less maintenance and everything like that, but there is a downside in that you're not getting the, the heat value out of it, so.
And so then the final recap would be, and then with the wiring, it would be the upgrades to replacing all the panels, and taking what measures that are capable to secure and safely wrangle up the rat's nest.
I, I think just, just as a FYI, one of the issues that, that we might run into if we're trying to tie in a handicap ramp that might come up the side to the top of the platform, there are certain requirements for size of that platform and, and all of that, and it'll, it'll be something to be dealt with, I'm sure, if we try to incorporate that.
Yeah, and the ramp would not be like a brick granite ramp. I was thinking more of an aluminum one that is rated by, is UL-listed and checked by an engineer and all that already when we purchase it, and I don't know where those are, but I, I can certainly get that information.
Right, but I guess, I, I understood, and it would be nice if you could sort of decorate it with landscaping in the front of it, so that, for the look and feel of it, but it's, it's when you, and I'm, I'm not an ADA expert, but I know that when you, you have a ramp like that, it comes to a landing, that landing has to have certain dimensions and certain capacity returning and everything.
Which I do think we're going to be able to make, because it is recessed in that archway, so there's about four feet of ground already there, and then you're going to have the landing of the stairs on top of that, so there will be still a, a good-sized area outside of the front door. But I will make sure I research all that.
That, okay. Well, thank you, Phil. I know, I know we've been pestering you about that to get some updates, but it was obviously a lot of things that had to be looked at together, and wasn't a simple.
Oh, yeah, yeah, we can do that. Yeah, that, that already happened last time.
Yeah, yeah. Well, thank you very much. Well, that finally gets us to public comment number one. Do we have any public comment number one? Seeing none, we will move along. Old business, the poet project request for proposals. We have a review draft in the packet, and Susan put some notes in there from the teams. Meeting call.
Just, I hope you read through these. There was like five questions that they had, Verdantis had, before they submit their revised RFP back to DES. They need the input from the town on these questions. So I tried to give you what guidance I had, that I remember from the meeting that Glenn also was at, and I reached out to Sandburn Head and Verdantis on a couple of things, just to try to clarify.
So I guess with you and Glenn being in attendance to the meeting, based off your conversations with them, you know, do you have some recommend, you know, what are really your feelings and recommendations that we can feel comfortable with, either changing, omitting?
Well, I guess the first, I guess we're looking at, at this.
Yeah.
Piece, and the, what's on the first page here? Susan says, I have asked for clarification on this point. So, see.
Yeah.
All right, so notes are in red. So on the first page, removing the requirement of a bid security bond, performance bond, and performance bond.
These are things that DES suggested back to Verdantis, that we don't, aren't required to have these bonds, so the question is, do we want the bonds?
I mean, I, I, I just, I just hate to drop anything like that as a, as a protection for the town, so my personal recommendation would be, would be not to drop them as a requirement. I think, I think part of the issue was, Susan, correct me, this is over, what, this is two weeks ago now?
Yeah.
The thought was that having, I mean, if we had all of these in place, that it might limit the responses, or it might, you know.
hinder applicants' right.
Right, but on the, on the flip side, you know, those, those security pieces are in there for a reason.
But, but DES says you don't need to have them in there, so there's got to be some reasoning.
It's not their town.
So, but, but Susan also kind of recapped in the front, right? So there's the question, and then there's the, I think Susan's recap of the, the requirement, right?
Yeah, the top page is my recap, and I include the hell out of it.
It's our town, right? And it would open us up to risk if we don't have some of them.
Yeah, and, and in particular, and in particular, the bonding, especially the, essentially the accusations that were made between the two companies about their prices that they came in, so if, you know, if all of a sudden a company, if we chose a company that did have a lower bid, and they're, which we have to by law, unless we can articulate why not, if all of a sudden, they kind of, if they did underbid, and now they have to walk away, I'd want the proper bonding in place that the job can get finished.
The first, the first one is the bid security bond, and, and Susan noted it right on there, that, and the reason for that is so that if we have a bidder, they can't, they can't, they, no, they can't pull the bid out.
Yeah, they can't just.
If, if, if they submit a bid, they're committing to that bid. That's the security for that piece. Then the other, the other security measures are, for once, a contract is awarded, and all of that.
Yeah.
So I, I get the performance bond and the security bond. I don't think I understand what the payment bond is, because we're, they're not paying us. So what's the payment bond for? Who is that?
Question.
I, I don't understand that one.
I don't know.
Right, because we would be paying them for work.
They'd be invoicing us. We would be sending invoices to DES. DES pays us, we pay them.
Sure, right, so it's not our money.
Yeah, correct.
Oh, okay.
That they make sure they pay their subs.
Exactly.
You need, need to come, you got to talk into a microphone if you want to talk. You got to use a microphone if you want to talk. The man behind the curtain will yell at you.
That answers that.
Payment, so a payment bond would be for subcontractors that, your contractors, who need to, to pay. If they were not paid, then that would protect the town from being sued from subcontractors due to lack of payment, or stoppage of work due to lack of.
So I guess my, the ones, the ones that I would not feel comfortable with removing are the payment and performance. I'm not super tied to the bid security, because we're going to. I'm not super tied to the bid security because we're gonna be awarding this pretty quickly, so once it gets accepted, it's not like there's a huge time delay between the bids, so if that, if that would be a preventative measure from getting additional people to apply, I wouldn't mind removing the bid security grant, but I wouldn't feel comfortable removing the payment and performance bonds.
Is that what you wanna do?
Yeah.
Everybody agrees on that?
Is everyone good with that?
Yeah, because if the company's gonna pull their bid, I don't know that I necessarily wanna do business with them anyway.
Yeah, especially how quickly the process will move once we hit it.
All right, so no on the bid security?
Right.
But yes on the others?
Yes.
All right.
Well, the second one, the answer kind of evolved. I did reach out to Sandborne Head. That was requiring, requiring the contractor to include a summary analytical table. Since we're already working with Sandborne Head, I didn't know if we needed to duplicate that.
Yeah, I think, I don't think we need that because that data is all, has to be provided to our current contractor with Sandborne.
Right, and they got back to me and said all they, they want a copy of the lab reports directly from the lab.
Yep.
So, and that will cover that requirement, so.
So, that's a no?
Right.
The UV light part of the system is something that DES does not require, and in fact, they will not reimburse us as under the grant. Verdantis, it is that folks who helped to put this RFP together, highly suggest that a system have it. So, as I said on the team's call, I'd be pretty reluctant to commit the town to payment of these if they weren't covered by the grant. And so the response was that we could either not have it in as a requirement, or we could offer it as, as an option that a homeowner could pay for if they wanted that extra security.
Yeah, which I'd be, I'd be comfortable with that, making it as an available option to them individually.
The next one, Susan, the work plan, does that relate to the other one up top here?
No, this, uh...
Number four, the fourth red part was about requiring a licensed plumber. That came up the last time around.
Oh, the licensed plumber, right.
Yeah, that came up last time around because they were saying they needed to have a licensed plumber on staff. Basically, when the work is done, they're gonna need a licensed plumber, however they handle that, because our permitting will require it, so.
So I'm fine with removing the requirement of the RFP.
Yep. And then the field blanket.
Well, we drew a blank on that.
Yeah.
Exactly.
I'm not sure that I can explain it either, except that I think it's, it's a, it's an extra sample that's, that's held in case they need to do double-checking, and it's a ref, kind of a reference point.
Isn't it an errors and emissions kind of thing?
I'm not sure.
I think that's what it is, like a, yes, it's a, there's a word for it, others like that.
A control.
A control sample.
There you go.
Yeah, and there was also the issue of how many you should have. DES recommended one per every twenty samples, and they wanted one at each sample or for each location, so I don't know what that means in numbers, but...
So does that add extra cost for the bidder to do a blank field sample?
That, that's the question. It's more work. I don't know if it's an extra sample that has to be paid for at the lab, so I got this explanation from...
But they don't, they don't do, they don't say, they don't test it unless they have to, right?
I think it's there.
So they're taking a sample, they're holding it, I think.
Could we...
Yes, it says it would be collected and be analyzed if any PFAS compounds are detected in the corresponding field sample, so then they would test that, right? So they're taking it, not necessarily doing anything with it.
I guess I'm comfortable with just going with the, you know, DES's recommendation, just to outline it as they recommend the amount needed, but leave it in there so that they can pull those samples.
All right, so DES recommends one field length per...
Every twenty samples.
So we'll say that.
Okay.
Okay.
And the last one, we had the documentation for waste disposal is not required, but Verdantis recommends requiring documentation for town's liability and good practice.
Doesn't seem like that's, should be such a hardship to, sort of like when someone does a demolition, they have to say where they're dumping their debris, right?
Yeah.
I think it makes sense that we do that.
Yeah.
We still hold, because we don't know how bad, what degraded the system might be.
Yeah. Yeah, I say we leave that in.
So, staying with Verdantis's...
Yes, correct.
Yep.
Okay. Okay, so, when are they gonna have that finalized?
We'll get that back to her today, yeah. And then she'll send it to DES.
It should be soon at this point, because, and then this goes, once Susan gets back to Verdantis on these, what we just agreed to, then it's the final draft goes to DES for final blessing, and at that point, it should be pretty quick and it should be out the door.
Okay. Fairgrounds group update and information. Ooh, you are the hot stove on social media this week.
Holy moly. So I think we were all under the impression that if we create a task force or a study group, very time limited, you know, we didn't have to do minutes and yada, yada, yada. So, a lot of discussion took place regarding the fairgrounds, and somebody had said, no, you are, so I asked Susan to reach out to NHMA to get clarification, and so the premise that we were all under is a false premise.
Yeah, I guess, and it's unfortunate because we thought that by making it available to numerous people in town, but being very informal that didn't meet those requirements, but they said, well, if you just kept it to a couple select town officials, then you'd be exempted from having any public meetings, so it's almost, it sets up a system that almost discourages allowing more public involvement in it, because then it's like, now you have to have a formal meeting, and now we're gonna have to, you know, so if we will continue in the way that it is, we will have to notice the meetings, there will be meeting minutes, we don't necessarily have to bring it here and televise it or broadcast it, but it's just, looking forward, I can see how folks would take the approach of, well, let's just make it a couple town officials so we don't have to go through that process, and then that ultimately excludes the public, which is unfortunate.
Right, right, so I think, moving forward, so for the fairground stuff, Phil, so for the fairground stuff, and I think there's a couple of other boards that we have, or little groups that we have right now that are gonna fall under this as well, that we have to notice, we have to public, open it to the public. I don't know that that necessarily means that public comment is allowed, even though the public is sitting, because just like this, right, public comment's only allowed at certain, and only because we allow it.
Yeah.
It does not have to be televised, because there's a cost to that, right? If we're in here, it's a cost to have somebody run it, so we don't have...
Transcribe meeting minutes.
Exactly.
But the meeting minutes can be, you know, our meeting minutes, we find are very detailed, but if you go by the letter of the law for somebody, if somebody who's there can take meeting minutes, they, they can be very minimal by what's actually required by law.
Right.
I know that you would require the time you start, the time you adjourn, who is present in any recommendations or decisions being forwarded, forward, votes. Other than that, you don't really have to do what you're...
Right, so I don't think that part is so onerous, because I don't think that these groups would be as detailed as Susan is, but it's, I think it's more about clearing up our misunderstanding of what we thought that was, right? Because there was nothing nefarious on our part to do this, we just thought, yeah.
But it's unfortunate, you jump through more hoops when you open it up to allow for participation of the public, instead of just having a couple of town officials working on it, which is unfortunate because you want more involvement.
We do, that's the whole point. We wanted involvement, so we have to regroup on our next meeting for the fairgrounds and how we need to make sure that we're meeting the letter of the law.
Yeah, and, and meeting notices, as long as it's not a public hearing, only requires twenty-four hours' notice, so it's not a long time lead, and, you know, as long as it's on the website and it appears in two other postings, you know, in town, town hall, in one other place, either post office or...
It can be the website plus one other physical...
It only needs one other?
Yeah.
Two total, and then it can include the website.
So what's the entire hall work?
Yeah.
So, lesson learned there.
Right, right, but I, so, but there's, I think there's three groups that fall under that. It's the fairgrounds, it's the transportation study group that the library director set up, which is, I mean, they're, it's public form anyway. I mean, that's set up that way.
But there's a couple nuances we have to check.
Yeah, we'll just make sure that we're capturing the minutes and posting those.
And then the wage salary.
And then the wage study group, right, so, so allowing people to come, so, but that does beg the...
They don't have to talk.
Well, that's the thing, it begs the question, right? Public, open to the public doesn't mean allowing public comment.
But they, but they have to be able to observe.
Yes, they have to be able to observe.
These are not, you know, legal negotiations here.
Come on up, right, exactly, and I think that's another misunderstanding, right? We're open to the public doesn't necessarily mean everybody gets to, right?
Yeah, absolutely correct.
Okay.
I just had a question on the wage study group. Obviously, a lot of those items discussed are typically things that would be discussed in non-public with regards to specific...
So, I, I think what you're gonna, I think what the wage salary is gonna have to do is because some of it is so confidential, they're gonna just have to restrict it to town officials, to a small group of town officials, and not allow members of the public to sit on it, in order for it to actually be able to function and get, elicit the information that needs to properly, but then they have to obviously present it in public with generic terms that don't identify specific employees.
Why would, why would that committee not be able to go into non-public when they get into those details?
I'd say the majority of it would be in non-public almost all, I mean, because it's...
And that could be.
Yeah.
That might have to be, there's no way you could not have any public, the whole point is to have some public.
But we could, if we were holding a wage matrix, we could introduce what we're talking about, and then literally say, because we're going to discuss this group of salaries and that, and it's non-public information according to whatever RSA, we would just write that, correct? Then we would also have to take non-public meeting minutes.
Yeah.
Review and approve them, and then at the following meeting.
Which are typically very brief.
Typically very brief, but I'm just, I'm just, I wanna make sure that I capture this correctly so that we're continuing to do it properly.
So to play devil's advocate, if everybody's salary is public information, what would be discussed in the wage study group that's non-public if we're talking about published salaries? We're not talking about an individual...
Talk about positions.
Because, well, and it...
But we also talk about, but we also talk about insurance that people take, we do get into some of the nitty-gritty of an individual and all of the benefits they get, so there is a possibility that during discussing, I'm gonna pick on Phil, he's sitting right here, they're picking on Phil, salaries, benefits, any other benefits that he would get, that we could disclose some non-public information as we're talking about a particular individual.
The restriction is, is that we as town officials cannot talk about their stuff in public session, members of the public can pull publicly accessible information and talk about it however they want.
So, but how are we talking about an individual's private information in those meetings anyway?
Because when, when you're, when you're discussing, why does this position need to go up? Well, because so-and-so left this town to go to this town for these type of benefits or this type of pay, you're trying to figure out where the problem, problems are, whether it's recruitment, retention, what are we competing directly against, and you're talking about specific situations that these department heads and people have, like, my employee told me, they went to this, you know, they left here because of this, this, and this, and, or they weren't happy with this, and they went to this town and got this, this, and this.
And then we're looking at other towns who give us information that, most of the information is public, some of it is, they give us other benefits and other information so that we're comparing all of our package versus all of their package, and we'd have, we'd actually have to tell the towns we were gonna discuss their data.
And it's, and it's, in the, in that session where you're compiling all the information, I can just, having been there, it would be so difficult to separate the individuals to the position during that phase of it, there's absolutely a time where you have to present all the information where that committee wants to come in and present it to the budget committee and the board, and we had to be very cautious in how we phrase stuff because we had to ensure that we were only talking about positions versus individuals, and, you know, different contract, because some of these people have contractual obligations that are tied to it. It was, it was very complicated even just streamlining it for that, and then like, I want everyone to have all the information, but to really, if you wanna get to the root of all the problems through that committee...
Right. You don't, you don't have to open up the meeting, ask for any public input in general, and then go right into a non-public session until the end of the meeting. That's really the only way it's gonna hire, because we do discuss a lot of different things, and you're talking about which percentage of your department fall under, and that could be not contentious, but there's a reason why some are, there's disparities, and so the discussion of those disparities don't belong in the public sector.
And there's, and there's certain, when you're talking about certain roles and responsibilities, there could be operational stuff that comes up during that building, because I remember even when we did it at the county, every employee had to sit down with this, I don't know, must have been a twenty, thirty-page questionnaire, and that wasn't subject to be released, it was filtered through HR to the private company that handled that, and that part of the information wasn't subject to release because of a lot of the confidential information that had to be built out of that.
Now, I, I appreciate this discussion, because it's, the right to know is, it's misunderstood a lot, right, and what's public and what's non-public, so I think the more discussions we have about it, and we correct course, like, we're realizing we, we made a faux pas, so we need to figure out how to fix it.
But as we're discussing this, I think more and more that the wage matrix committee may need to be just town officials, because as we talk about more and more non-public information, and I would say a majority of our meetings have just been either people elected or people who work for the town, so they have fallen under that, but when you're talking about some of the discussions we have had in that wage matrix meeting, I, I think we may have, if we want to do it public, it would be, here you go, you have any comments? Okay, thank you, we're gonna go to non-public to discuss the, you know, salary and health benefits.
How many civilians are on that committee?
We opened, we opened it up, I thought, for two.
There's two.
But we only had one, one respond, and then that one stepped down during, and so I, we really, other than two meetings, I don't think we had any civilian members that attended.
That's true, because technically, we don't have any, every, everyone is either elected or works for the town.
Yeah, because it was all a lack of response at first.
Either in a full-time or part-time basis.
My only concern, I mean, depending on how you set it up, is, is again, this is gonna be another meeting or a group of just selectmen who put stuff through and pass it through, and nobody's gonna have it.
It's not just selectmen.
But not, well, that's, like, we can't, that's why we can't have more than two selectmen on it, more than a couple budget committee members, and that's why we just brought in a couple. It's same with the, the benefits, the benefits committee, that's, those aren't public meetings, but you're talking about very detailed stuff that people are looking for, which could be considered kind of like contractual.
But we had no public.
Yeah.
They were only employees and, you know, what's left working for it?
I, I think from my perspective, the thing you wanna avoid the most is comments that could be construed as derogatory towards an employee, or, and as you get into the weeds in some of these positions, things come out that may not shine too brightly in the sun, and that's not to say that anybody has skeletons in their closet, but an employee could take something that's said or recorded in the minutes as just that, and the other side is, as I'm preparing, you know, the skills level for these guys and kind of doing, you know, work history, there's things in there that probably should not be public.
Yeah, I mean, it'd be considered kind of like, protect, some of the person, protected personnel file, like if it's performance-based issues or, you know, when you're, when you're talking about these, it's such, you want the openness, but this is such a fine line, and I mean, and even the case law that's coming out, a lot of this stuff, it's still heads or tails, either, you know, nobody's made a clear definitive line on some of these, it's ruled one way on some and one way on another, and I just, I think that's why it's important, anything that comes, I think, anything that comes out of the weight, you know, like a committee like the wage salaries, if it's not gonna be, have public involvement, not gonna be a public meeting, I think that's why it's just important that it's, there is opportunity for public comment during present, when any information is presented from those committees to the select board before decisions are made, I think that's what's just gonna be really important about those types of boards, because then you can, you have time to present all the information, and then you can sterilize it so it doesn't, because it's just different, like, we're a small... because it's just different, like, we're a small town, so people, like, I call you Phil all the time instead of Director of Public Works. It just comes out that way, just because everyone knows each other. And like you said, there could be, sometimes people wanna complain and make comments to the job because they don't like somebody's personality, has nothing to do with the performance of their job. And having some of that open to public, I think, especially now solidified in what was a public meeting, could be construed as criticism of employee performance and things that should absolutely only be handled in non-public.
So, I would like to recommend that the wage matrix then stays as a non-public and then present on a periodic basis as a joint meeting to the budget committee and the select board, so that we do get the public comment that when we are presenting our updated information.
I, I would say, just based on what, I would recommend that we just toss a couple of our ideas back to NHMA to say, hey, if we went this route, is this okay? And is this okay? Before we make any final decisions on how any of it's gonna go forward, just say, hey, here are a couple things that we're ballparking. Are we, is this proper? Is this legal? Before we make that decision.
Yeah. I, I don't think that you can create a committee and say that-
Say it's non-public.
Say it's non-public. I mean, you still have to post meetings, they're public. You have to open them as public meetings, and then you can immediately go into non-public-
Yeah.
And do your business.
So, we can, we can just, well, let's ask NHMA if it's possible, if it's, can be constructed in a way that it's considered a non-meeting under the, under the guise of 91A, or if it's better to just keep it with non-members of the, with department heads as an official committee that put notices, meetings, and has to go into non-public session. So, I think those are a couple questions that we need and follow, follow it up on.
Yeah, I think there are very few conditions that you can call it a non-meeting.
Yeah, yeah. It usually involves legal counsel.
It's usually when you have an attorney-
Yeah.
Or something like that. But, I mean, you can certainly confirm it with NHMA, but I-
So, we would open it up as public and then close it and go into non-public.
Well, you'd have to do, you'd have to go through the, you'd open it up, per the agenda, and then, and then someone would make a motion to go into non-public under whatever section of the statute it is.
Right.
And you vote to go into non-public, and then you do. Then you end non-public, you're back into public session, and then you-
And then we would vote to make sure that we agree that that stays and not seal the minutes and go on.
Vote, seal the minutes, as you see appropriate. And then, if there's more business that you need to conduct that's out of non-public, you, you then continue to do that, or you just adjourn the meeting.
Yeah.
And it's up to you if you want, if public is there, ask them for public input. You don't have to, but that's-
But consistency will be key. It's, it's either you always allow an opportunity for public comment, or you kinda never allow public comment.
And almost every, almost every board and commission in this town, on their agendas, provides an opportunity, an agenda item for public comment. It's usually at the end.
And, and you gotta remember, that doesn't mean it's a question and answer. They can just state their piece, and then you can, thank you for your input.
Right, and you can limit the amount of time.
I just wanna make sure we're doing it correctly.
Yeah, and that's why, that's why, now that we've realized it's an issue, I just wanna make sure we don't go forward with anything else that is not in compliance, so.
If, if the majority of the meetings, meetings are gonna be in non-public, any public comment should happen at the beginning of the meeting. They don't have to sit around if they want to.
So, we would have a generic agenda for that wage matrix then?
Probably. Yeah.
Sorry.
Okay. New business. We have tax abatements to review with the recommendations of the assessor.
One being recommended early.
Yeah. Okay. So, all right, so, I guess I'll just, I'll read the, I'll read the assessor's brief, if everyone's comfortable, I'll read the assessor's brief description of the scenario and then their recommendation.
Yes.
That work with everyone? Okay. So, the first one we have is an abatement recommendation for 37 Great Pond Road. The subject property is improved with a conventional-style home situated on .42 acres of land. The subject is listed in very good condition. The taxpayer believes they are disproportionately assessed because their lot sizing is incorrect, claiming the actual lot size is .1836 acres or 80 feet by 100 feet totaling 8,000 square feet, as depicted on the town tax map, U4 Lot 203. The tax maps were last revised to April 1st, 2015 by Johnny O'Donnell and Associates with the disclaimer that the tax maps are for assessment purposes only and not for property conveyances. The subject's parcel-recorded legal instrument does not specify any meets and bounds pertaining to the lot size. It references a plan of Great Pond Park recorded in the Rockingham County Registry of Deeds dated July 3rd, 1928, for a more particular description. However, a review of the plan online revealed no specific meets and bounds. The town is responsible for mapping, zoning, and the amount of land on each parcel. The taxpayer would have to provide a certified plot plan stamped by a professional engineer to justify correcting the parcel's lot size for the abatement to be approved. So, the recommendation by the, by the assessor is we recommend the abatement be denied unless a certified plot plan stamped by a professional engineer is provided that indicates the actual size of the parcel. 37-
Okay. I was looking at the first one in our packet.
I, I was doing the fir-, I was doing the first one in the official packet.
It's the last one.
Okay.
Got it. Okay.
So, yeah, obviously, I think, you know, if this person, you know, I, I would make a motion to recommend denying the abatement based off of the information provided by the assessor, due to the fact that, but, you know, they could come back if they wanted to get a plot plan recertified.
Exactly.
So, I'll make, I'll make that motion. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Do I sign it if it's a denial? Or do we, do we have to sign that it's actually been voted on, or? Uh, yep, sure does. Okay. We'll pile all these up. Okay, the next one is gonna be 8 Lantern Lane. The subject property is improved with a one-story condominium located in Lamplighter Estates Condominium and Age-Restricted 62+ Condo Association. The subject is listed in average condition. The taxpayer believes they are disproportionately assessed because a closet or storage for electric and cable wires that is common area was listed on the property record card. This area was removed by Kingston Assessing and Permitting Clerk. The assessed value was not appealed. They recommend that the abatement be denied. Second. Any further discussion?
Just to the fact that that area is not common area, owned by the condominium owner.
Your microphone too.
Just as the fact that electrical closet, heating closet, laundry room, whatever you wanna call it, is a part of the condo. It's their responsibility.
Okay.
If the hot water heater breaks, they have to pay for it, not the condo.
Okay. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Uh, the next one we're gonna do is 5 Rock Remen Road. So, this one is, the subject property is improved with a Cape-style home situated on .70 acres of land. The subject is listed in average condition. The taxpayer believes they are disproportionately assessed because they lack potable drinking water and for cooking as well. The taxpayer feels the value placed on the house is too high. No one would want to purchase a home at its current value if they are unable to drink or cook with this water. The taxpayer provided water supply well sampling results dated February 1st, 2020 from Eastern Analytical, a professional laboratory on behalf of the Town of Kingston, for PFAS compounds were detected in the sampling with one PFOA exceeding current ambient groundwater quality standards, ACQS. Thus, the Town of Kingston has been providing the taxpayer with bottled drinking water and will continue to do so. No cost estimates were provided to correct the issue with the taxpayer requesting an abatement for 299,900. An economic obsolescence adjustment of 10% will be applied to the building improvements lowering the assessed value to 309,700. The recommendation of the assessor is that we would recommend the abatement be approved but reduced to $309,700, not their request of 299,900.
So, is this one of the properties that we'll be putting in a system for?
Yes.
So, why, why wouldn't we? No.
Do I have microphone?
Maybe just as well as-
I know, I know.
So, my question is, I understand that the water has been contaminated. The town is currently providing drinking water, bottled water, and that once we start installing systems, there will be a permanent solution and their water will be potable as a result of the treatment system. So-
Maybe we have to hold, maybe we have to hold on to this one and send it back to the assessor and explain to them what's going on, because they may not know that that.
I think we have a certain amount of time before we have to officially respond.
Yeah, we have to.
So, we might wanna just hold it and, and do research and see how long it's gonna take to get those systems in as well.
Also, I, I think if we were to do that for that property, we would have to do it for the rest of the properties that have been identified and not just this one.
Right.
Given that the town has a solution to rectify the situation, I'd be hard-pressed to, to, to approve this debate.
Same here, especially when we're right on the cusp of getting, you know, obviously, I wish it was implemented before even the new year, but we're right there, you know, we've been very steadfast in going after this and addressing this drinking water issue. So, recommendation to-
Deny.
I'll, I'll make the recommendation to deny.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, 8 Mockingbird Lane. The subject property is improved with a Cape Cod-style home situated on 2.26 acres of land. The subject is listed in average condition. The taxpayer believes they are disproportionately assessed because of the market data and level of assessment. Looking through the newspaper, they find that not many houses are assessed the value of their house and their estimation and are much better than their house. Their assessment has almost doubled since last year. The appeal references newspaper listings as comparables, but none were provided, nor was an appraisal that would justify a reduction in assessment. The 12 houses on Mockingbird Lane, on an assessed-per-square-foot basis, ranged from $207 a square foot to $400 a square foot with a median assessment of $261 a square foot. The subject property is assessed at $259 a square foot within the range of the assessments. They recommend the abatement be denied. So, I'll make a motion to deny. There's just, there's nothing here supporting any information other than some conjecture from-
Second. You go.
Lori has a second? All right, so, any further discussion?
Aye.
All those, all those in favor? Aye.
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 Any opposed? Yep, one more. 81 Little River Road. The subject property is improved with a contemporary style home situated on 2.41 acres of land. The subject is listed in average condition. The taxpayer believes they are disproportionately assessed based on seven homes in their immediate area, which have sold in the last 18 months. The sale price of these homes is 8.14% less than the appraised value of the taxpayer's house, despite being 24% greater in gross living area. Five homes were greater in gross living area, but three homes were much older than the subject, and only two homes were similar in construction quality to the subject. Six houses from the general neighborhood, all similar in ages and construction quality, and three in the same condition were reviewed. The houses on an assessed-per-square-foot basis ranged from $266 a square foot to $337 a square foot with a median assessment of $303. The subject is assessed at $308 a square foot within the range of these assessments.
And the assessor's recommendation?
Assessment's, yeah, assessment's recommendation is to be denied.
Yeah. I'll, I'll make the motion to follow the assessor's recommendation for denial.
Second? All right, Ellie with the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Uh, yep, the Post, Boston Post Cane. We were wondering if this tradition should be arrived. This is the first I've heard of it.
Yeah. Yeah, that came to Human Services. Someone requested about that. And so, I looked in, after I did the agenda, I did find some, a little information back to 2009, I think is the last time.
Who else did you know?
Rita Jones.
Rita Jones.
Oh, nice.
Uh, so, for those listening, the Boston Post Cane Award, it's, it's an award from the Boston Post Cane to the oldest person, oldest living town resident. And it gives him the honor of holding the cane, I guess, years past the last cane was lost. So, now the cane stays at the town hall, but they get her certificate, uh, award. So, what we're looking is if we wanna continue that distinction, and we would present, you know, the honor of the award to the oldest living Kingston resident.
It's a nice, it's a nice tradition that we let lapse.
It is, I would agree. I, I assume, we, we don't have the original cane, we have a replacement. Do you still have it?
It's, yes, it's in my office. The only thing, I noticed that it doesn't have the town name engraved on it. You might wanna change that. It has all the rest of the curvage, but not the town.
Well, I know that in, in other towns that I'm familiar with, they often will display it in a, usually at the town hall.
Right.
In a, in a, in a case, you know, with whoever the current recipient is.
Yeah.
And as you said, the recipient does get a certificate.
Yep.
And there's a presentation made, and it's, it is a nice tradition.
It is.
We may have some input on this.
I just wanna ask a question. Are there any qualifications? I know many of the surrounding towns, you have to have lived in the town for like the last 25 or 30 years or something? So, that way, someone that, a newcomer that's lived here for eight years wouldn't get it over somebody else that's lived here for 50 years. So, I don't know if there's any restrictions.
I don't know what our policy is. I, I can't, in the time that I've lived in town, I can't ever remember this process happening. So, maybe we could check into it and see if we have any particular guidelines for it, what they are.
It, it hasn't been that long since the last one, even though we dropped it, but-
Yeah, 2009.
I think the length of years in town would be if someone was the exact same age. I think it still goes to the oldest person. But we should look to see what some of the other towns do.
But I guess what, what you wouldn't want is some newcomer to move into town and they're older than the person that has it, and they get bumped.
Yeah, no, no. That would not be nice, in that case.
That fight must be pretty.
But no, I, I think it's, I think it's a great tradition to take back up, but let's just make sure, you know, if we need to outline anything on how we do it.
So, it was on an episode of the New Hampshire Chronicle not that long ago, and that's the first time I heard of it. So, and it was Kingston was one of those towns. I think it's fabulous.
It goes back to the evolutionary days, and that's how, I believe, is we're sketching.
All right. All right, next item. We have a historic barn easement, 108 Exeter Road.
Well, it's a very familiar address to me.
Oh, that's good.
Yeah, it's good. And I'm, I'm gonna recuse myself from the discussion. I'll be in the audience if you have questions for me. I did send some, in case folks didn't-
Yeah, I saw the photos.
Weren't familiar. And these aren't in color, although Susan sent this document and it was in color. But this is just for your reference, about what the, what the property and the barn looks like, and some of, a couple of those original photos on the, on the back side.
So, I guess we have, we have a brief explanation from the assessor that states, the barn located at 108 Exeter Road, tax map R37-2. For the past 10 years, the barn on 108 Exeter was being assessed at full assessed value of $33,536. Previously, the assessment range for the exemption was cho, that was chosen was 50%. That means that the structure was valued at $16,768 for the previous 10 years. The municipality may choose the cha, to, to change the, to change this rate for the following 10 years, as long as they remain within the 25 to 75% range stated in the RSA, with 25% being the least amount given off and 75% being the highest percentage of what is considered the full value assessment. Using the new rates provided- Using the new rates provided in the 2023 reevaluation, barn loft slash loft slash basements are currently assessed at $33.5 per square foot. The structure is 39 feet by 56 feet. So, we're looking at 2,184 square feet. That multiplied by the 33.5 would come up with a total of 73,164. Based on the condition for age and improvements made to the barn, the assessors have determined the depreciation of said barn to be 75%. For the purposes of this exemption, the barn would be assessed at 54, would now be assessed at $54,873 based on the above calculations. If the range amounts remain the same, 50% with the exemption, the barn would be assessed for the next 10 years for $27,436. During the townwide reevaluation, the cost to build price per square foot for barns increased. If the Board of Selectmen would like to keep the assessment of the barn more in line with the previous assessment, then they may want to change the reduction to 75 if they believe the contribution of public good is still 50% and the assessment will go up the line with the rest of the community. Do you wish to offer any comment?
So, this, this is my property. This is my, this is my barn. It dates to 1900. It's but part of a farmstead since the, since the property was established. The property has been used for all different kinds of farming and agriculture. Under my tenure, it's part of my Christmas tree farm activity. It's very prominently featured on Route 111. It's a very, it's a very landmark feature on that road. Over the 39 years that I've owned it, I've put in, oh, $70,000 to $80,000 worth of upgrades to it to keep it and repair it. New foundation, new cement floor underneath. It's been re-roofed twice. It's been recited on part of it and windows and so forth. Anyway, I have always thought that the public benefit of that particular barn and where it's located and how it's visible to the public, and it's also located in the agricultural zone of the town. It's a, it's a, it's a, it's an example of a traditional Yankee barn. It's a particular style of barn. The barn, did I say that it was built in 1900?
No.
Oh, you did, okay. So, when I, I've been through, this barn has been under the easement now for 20 years. The original one was in 2003. Second, the, the renewal of it was in 2013 and so it's up for a renewal now. When the easement was first granted by the town, it was at a 50% reduction in the assessed value of the barn and the land that's directly under it. And as the assessor stated, if the board feels that the public benefit, if you will, of that property and of that barn is a higher level, they can, they can go as high as a 75% reduction in the assessed value for, for the barn. So, I've always felt that it has been worthy of the 75, although when it was first granted, it was granted a 50% abatement. So, unknown to me, until I read this in the package, I didn't realize that the assessor was actually suggesting that perhaps the board consider going higher to the 75% level. And I certainly wouldn't have any argument with that if the board would wish to do that. But, so, that's my pitch.
I think I'm confused on some of the numbers in this. With the, the math that they did for the square feet, they're saying the assessed value is 73,000, right? Where are they coming up with the 54,000? Says.
If.
Yeah, this depreciation factor, that's, that.
Oh, so we're going off of the depreciation factor.
It's been depreciated, so then the actual assessed value.
Is the depreciation value.
Correct.
Got it, thank you.
One more piece of information I can just share with you is that there's a book that has recently been updated in the last few years, Preserving Old Barns. It was done by a professor up at UNH and, and a barn preservationist. And just, so that you know, they felt that, that that barn was worthy enough of including him there as an example of the Yankee barn. And also, it's there because it holds the solar panels for my solar system and they were showing that as an example of, you know, how you can use existing agricultural structures for more modern types of activities.
Sorry, if you have.
Yeah, you. This what you've, this what you've been waiting on the whole time, already?
Yes.
I'm a patient guy.
You, you are. I appreciate that.
And I learn so much when I sit in this meeting every time, so it's very worthwhile. It's interesting that, that this came up at this point. Basically, what happens on these discretionary easements is that you have to have the application in by April 15th, so it's appropriate for this to come in. I think, we, we've had these in the past. I think probably in 2021, two of the select board members who are here now were involved in making determinations on these kinds of easements. Basically, in 2021, when we went through that process, there were several people who had applied. And what, what we found out, the Heritage Commission folk looking at this, was that the determinations on each of the three different properties were, were based pretty much on individual feelings of the different select board members. There was really no objective criteria to bounce the decisions off of. And so, the Heritage Commission is, is working with Susan, we've been working with Susan a little bit on this, but what we wanted to is try to develop some criteria for the select board to look at so that when you're making the determinations on these things, that, that people are treated using the same criteria and that it's, it's objective. And so, we're working on that right now, hopefully to get that done before you need to make some decisions on, on additional applications. Because I, I believe there may be two more coming in between now and April 15th. So, just want to let you know that we're doing that. Hopefully, you're interested in having us make some objective criteria that we would then bounce off of you all individually and then as a, as a group to get your opinions as to whether or not it meets your views as to what would be appropriate for criteria. And then you can use that then in, in evaluating each of the different, different applications. What, what's required is you have to have a public hearing before you can make a decision on the application itself. What happened a few years ago is the, the board got the applications, actually did site visits to all of the sites to look at the buildings and then had one night with public hearings where, where they made the decisions on the, on the applications. And so, I just wanted to give you that background so that you know it. Certainly, there'll probably be some new members of the board coming on, on board before the deadline to get all of the applications approved.
So, to make a decision on this, do we need a, we need a public hearing even for a reapplication? For a renew, for a renewal as well or just an initial?
Unless the initial, unless the initial easement indicated that it would automatically renew, you, then if it doesn't say that it would automatically renew, then, then the applicant and the Board of Selectmen have the same responsibilities with respect to the, to the application, which would be a public hearing and for you to make your decisions on it, so.
I can say having, because I'm sitting there thinking, I'm like, how do I evaluate whether, you know, because like you said, it's, it's very subjective and it could be a very emotional decision, but I think, because I think there's a huge difference between somebody who has a barn and they are maintaining it for the historic purpose and it's not necessarily a benefit to them, but they don't want it to fall into disrepair and, you know, obviously, this, your barn, it's a beautiful barn, it does have a great location, you see it every time you drive to Exeter. And, you know, but I think there's a difference between somebody who's maintaining and historing it because for the greater good and wanting to preserve it versus, or if it was filled top to bottom with stuff and they're actively using it every day and it's a, and it's an absolute benefit to them, why, you know, why do some people get a benefit versus, you know, that don't have a barn or get tax reductions? But I, I would love to see, I think you, coming up with some objective criteria that could say, hey, these are the type of things that should really be taken into consideration. I am just kind of curious about this public hearing part of it, though, if we have to. Any idea on your previous approvals, if they continued or anything, Glenn?
Well, I can tell you that when I first got the, the easement was in 2003 and that was very soon after the, the legislation took effect. So, I don't think that the process, I don't think there was a public hearing. In fact, I don't think I even came before the select board. I submit, I submitted my application, a determination was made and I got the end result in the mail. When it came up for renewal in 2013, again, I submitted the renewal paperwork and there was no public hearing at that time held. And again, the result, well, it must have been discussed at a meeting and the result was sent to me and it was, it was just continuing on with what had been approved originally. I think that's the issue. I mean, here for, there really hadn't, 2021, there really hadn't been a procedure on how to do this. And so, in 2021, when Susan got the applications, we, we worked with Susan to kind of go through the process, looking at the RSA. And Susan actually has a, a flow chart, I guess, of how the process works.
I was trying to remember where we left off. We did complete that.
Pardon me?
I was trying to remember where we left off with all of that. You just jogged my memory. I do have all that information, so I can pull that out and get it to all of you.
Yeah, so I guess we, I guess the one thing I'd, I wouldn't want us to obviously take action until we verified whether or not we have to have a public hearing.
Right.
If a public hearing isn't required for renewal or recertification, we could take it up at just our next normally scheduled meeting, but if one is required under new provisions of the law and stuff that you've discovered, we can just make sure we fulfill that requirement. But I, I think just, you're, you're right, it is. I, I, this is such a, it's such an opinion-based thing because you could just get one member that's, no, you get to have a barn, I don't have a barn. I don't think you should get a tax break on it. No, pay your taxes. And you, and, but then you get people that do appreciate the historic value of it and the aesthetic value that it provides.
Which is why you need to, when you're looking at this, the evaluation has to be done based on, on, on the benefit of the public, if you will.
Yes.
Yeah.
It's not the benefit to me.
Yeah.
Although there is some benefit.
Yeah.
With a, with a, with a slight tax reduction, which helps to offset theoretically, to help offset some of the improvements to keep the structure in good repair.
Yeah, because it'd be hard to, it'd be hard to advocate for the public good if you didn't, if you didn't have a tree farm that was open to the public where people get to see it and you were so far back off the road that nobody could even see it when driving by, it was just like, you're the only person that ever actually sees it.
Right. If it were a hidden asset.
Yeah.
And, and, and had no public exposure or benefit, you'd have a hard time arguing for the easement.
Yeah.
Based on the legislation. Yeah, there are certain requirements too. I mean, the thing has to be 75 years of, of age or older. One of them is it really has, should be able to be seen from a public way or from a pond or whatever, but it should be seen from a public way. Historically important on a state, local level, stuff like that. And so, there, there are specific criteria as far as eligibility.
Yeah.
And then, once you get through that eligibility requirement, then you go to the question of how much of an abatement do you want to give based on, of the, the value to the public, actually. And that's, and that's where that discretionary piece comes in for the, for the select board.
Yeah, so I guess I'd just like to, I, I would personally just kind of like to table it till we can figure out the public hearing spot, but.
I, I don't have a problem postponing the public hearing. The only awkward part, if you will, is that, this is our colleague here on the board and I would, even after a public hearing, would recommend that we stay at the 50% valuation as opposed to 75. Then it's consistent in it, because otherwise you're going to be accused of giving you preferential treatment because we'd be doosed it even more by going to a 75% instead of a 50. Is that, am I correct in that or?
Well, no, no, I, I think it's that, I think it's, that's why you have to clearly be able to articulate the reasons why you are bringing, you know, because, you know, listen, we, we've all had issues that have had to come before the board and, you know, listen, I've had issues and you guys have no problem. Listen, I get you're dealing with this, but you were wrong. Okay, yeah, you're right, I was. But we were trying to work through an issue.
Right.
And, but I, I think as, as long as any decision we make can be clearly articulated, that's where I think, you know, it may not help us for this particular one in enough time, but moving forward, I think you being able to help the town come up and adopt some valid criteria that can be, okay, when, when weighing this, these are the talking points you should be looking at and viewing that aren't just opinion-based, but actually, you know, following the spirit of the, you know, why, why the legislation was enacted.
We have until April 15th?
Well, applications have to be in by April 15th.
Okay.
You have 60 days after you receive an application to make a decision. So you have time. I mean, it's, to me, this, I think it's, I think it's a foregone conclusion, this, this application meets the eligibility requirement. So the next question is, what, what level of abatement is appropriate? So you've got 60 days after whatever date Glenn sent this in to determine what that appropriate abatement level is.
Is, is part of that process, setting the criteria, determining the 25 to 75% range? Or is that still very subjective? Or can your criteria, if you check off three boxes, it's, you know, it's 25%? If you meet all of it, it's 75%? So how do we know in that range?
That's what we would try to do is, is make it so that you could actually come to a percentage determination based on, on that criteria.
So, so I think because of that, and it sounds like you guys already have a lot of legwork done, I, I don't see any reason why we can't.
Yeah.
Use that criteria for this year.
Yeah, just, and, and even if it's not completed, what you have so far, if you think it's applicable.
But we don't have a lot right now, is what I'm saying. So we're working on that at this point.
But you have until June.
What's that?
We, we have until June, really, to make a decision on the process.
No, no, this application, yeah.
I, I understand the application separate. He has until April 15th, but then the select board has 60 days.
No, no, we have 60 days from receiving his, not from, not from the, not from the envy.
By April something, we have.
Okay, all right, okay. Okay, no pressure, but, okay.
It's, it shouldn't be that complex.
No, no.
I don't think it should be.
But no, I, I think that's, I think that'd be a great resource because having, having talking points that you can sit there and relate to why you came to that decision is important.
Sorry, forgot all about that. But I was also, I, I wanted double check about the public hearing.
We'll just table that till the next meeting. We'll have it, we'll know whether or not there needs to be a public hearing or if we can take action on it the next one. Oh, yeah, you got to turn that mic on. Sorry, I turned it off.
Sorry about that. They actually, the, there's an easement involved in this, so the, the applicant grants an easement to the town. And it's a very specific easement in, in some cases, but, but that easement should indicate whether or not the, the abatement can be renewed without a public hearing.
Without public hearing, okay.
So, Glenn, probably, do you have, you must have an, a, an easement form, I would believe.
Well, there is one. It's filed at the Rockingham County Registry.
Right.
It's a recorded document and I supplied a copy of that to the town assessor.
Right, so that.
So they have that.
That should indicate whether or not you can renew it without a public hearing.
And I don't recall if it does or not, but I'll check.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, you have that, Susan.
All right. Public comment number two. Seeing none. Board business. Approval of meeting minutes from February 12th, 2024.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We have some facilities use requests. Let's see. Sorry, just trying to find them. There we go. The first one we have is the Kingston Fire Association looking to use the plains on June 29th, 2024, between 2:00 and 6:00 PM. Setup will take place prior to this event. This is for. Yes, the Fifth Annual Brew Fest. They will have breweries. They will have breweries, food trucks, music, and more. The date will be from 6:29, 2:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. And there is alcohol service requested.
On the plains, right?
Yep, right on the plains. We have a release of waiver liabilities and indemnifying agreements. And it's been signed off by the road agent, but I, I'm sure the fire chief knows about it, and the police chief said. But he has not signed off on it, but I don't see any issue moving forward to this. I would just like the fire chief to sign off on it, as we require. So I would just say, make a motion to approve based off of review and sign off by the fire chief. All right, first, a second by Chuck. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? There's that one. We have another one for Town Hall. This is by North Shore something? Swing dance, okay. Finally, somebody else's handwriting I can't read. So it looks like for swing dancing on March 16, 2024, from 4:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. It has been signed off by the chief of police, the road agent, the public works director, and the fire chief.
Seven hours?
Yeah. Our spring formal, typical, two swing bands, food, and if allowed, a cash bar. We have not traditionally allowed any serving of alcohol in the Town Hall.
No.
So we can't, I, I think that's be the one condition. They said if allowed. So I think as a conditional, they are requesting alcohol service, but we have never typically allowed it. Actually, didn't we?
16th of March.
March 16.
Didn't, didn't we do a BYOB thing at the Town Hall?
We just did something.
It was, it was a few years, it was a few years ago. It was.
I don't remember.
There was. I think so, but it was, it was a BYOB event at the Town Hall, so, so it's not unprecedented. Swing dancers, North Shore Swing Dancers. Their address is out of Fremont, New Hampshire. So, yeah, I, I guess, logistically, I have concerns about a cash bar for how they'd be able to set it up in here with, you know, you need wash sinks and certain levels of sanitation and stuff like that.
When we put the insurance requirements for events that were happening on town properties, there is a caveat if they have, if they are serving alcohol, that they would have to have additional insurance, and that insurance is equal to like, I think it's like a million-dollar insurance policy. So, so I think when we put that together, sometimes last year, we talked about any people having alcohol, and if they were going to have that event, then if they were going to include, they would have to provide a certificate of insurance, indemnifying the town.
Yeah.
And naming them liable. That's how we talked about the alcohol.
Okay, yeah, because in this packet, I don't have a indemnification.
They need to put that together and show a certificate of insurance.
So I guess, do we want to even entertain telling them this is possible if you provide the right insurance, and you have to have a vendor that's completely essentially self-contained and can meet any requirements for indoor use? Because we have no facilities that they can hook into. We don't have like, a sink or anything.
We don't have potable water.
Yes, we don't have potable water either.
I think that's a huge risk.
Set up.
So I would say, so, let's make a motion, you know, I'd probably take a motion to approve without the alcohol, without the alcohol service.
Before, before I do that, does, have, have police and fire signed off on this?
They have signed off on it, which would be awkward to me, because if they were going to allow alcohol service, I would assume that with an event like that, they'd demand a detail.
Well, yeah.
Oh, custodian needed for four hours to open and close, clean, okay.
Could it be a BYOB? That's, that's separate than a cash bar. I mean, it sounds like they, they want to entertain the thought of alcohol, so.
How is it written?
They said alcohol service if allowed.
Well, that sounds to me like they want to serve.
But, but then they said, if, oh, that's, food, and allowed, if allowed, a cash bar.
Well, I'm just saying, and offering an alternative, no on the cash bar, are we, would we entertain a BYOB? If the answer's no, the answer's no.
I guess, I look at them the same. It's either you're allowing it or you're not, but.
Well, but, but I think a cash bar, you have, there's a lot more requirements. Instead of you just bringing your own bottle of wine in a glass, that, that's different than a service and all of that.
But I think we'd still have to have the insurance indemnification requirements if we were going to allow that.
PSD, too.
Yeah. Well, they're gonna need that no matter what.
They're gonna need that anyway.
But I guess, you know, looking at, we're looking at that potable water requirements, they're still gonna be, they're gonna be doing food, so they're gonna be... Well, I think, I think part of when we explain to people, yes, you can use this, but please be advised, we have no potable water that is, and we have no potable water, and you will not have access to any of our, any of the facilities other than the bathrooms. Like, the bathrooms will be open, but you don't, you can't go down to the employee kitchens, kitchens and stuff like that. Correct. I guess, ultimately, I have no problem with a cash bar, but I think it's gonna invite, they're gonna have to jump through some of the hoops if they wanted to go that route. Because we, as the town, have hosted an alcohol event, and let's say, I hate to always just go to the fact that, nope, somebody's gonna screw this up and make it a problem. But I think they would probably need to be known that, if we auth, if we authorize, you would need a proper insurance indemnification. Whoever your alcohol service vendor would have to be completely self-contained. The town has no potable water, and if doing alcohol service, you may be required to have a police detail.
Yeah, but I, I still think, in light of that, I mean, we authorized BYOB at the rec center.
Yeah, and it's, yeah. But I think they would still need insurance, and the rec center, yeah.
Yeah, but the company that North Shore, whatever it's called, might, as an organization, might have insurance.
Correct, that's what I'm saying. If they want to, if they want to prove that they can meet the requirements, I'm not opposed to having it. I mean, listen, there's no potable water on the plains, and we're having Beer Fest over there. It's all self-contained.
Right.
So there's no potable water here, but as long as they can self-contain it, and we make them aware of the provisions, that they won't have access to those things, I wouldn't be opposed to it. And listen, if somebody screws it up for everyone else, then we go down the road of saying, hey, guess what? We're not gonna allow alcohol in the Town Hall. But I don't want to just assume somebody's gonna screw it up.
I'm just saying we should offer, instead of a cash bar, because there's, you have to get a bartender, and there's a lot of issues. I understand you have to have a police detail, but we could also say you could do a BYOB, and then that's, it's a different requirement.
They, they talk about cash bar. Did, did, did the chief of police say anything in his comments about requiring detail?
He did not.
I'm surprised.
So am I.
It's almost as if they had the cash bar company, their own equipment and way to clean up, rather than leaving it to them to...
I thought our facilities use permit asked for the anticipated number of attendants.
It does, do they not say?
It doesn't say on there.
It, it depends on what form they used.
Like their form?
No, I think it's ours, but it, is it?
Yeah, I don't know.
Yeah, it does, it doesn't say the number of.
I'll get more information.
I mean, an event like that could, could attract a lot of people. I'm surprised that the, the police chief did not discuss that.
Yeah, I guess before we sign off, I mean, I'm sure they want to get it done quickly, but could we maybe just take this up next Monday and reach out to them and say, hey, here's some of the concerns there. The board isn't really sure either way, but if you are looking to do this, here's some things you need to know about. If there's any additional details you can provide us to help us make an informed decision, that'd be fantastic. Yeah, like, like number of people's report. Like 12 or 200?
Right, exactly, exactly.
Okay, so I think if we hold.
It's their, what's their spring fling, if they're from something?
Yeah, spring formal.
It's gonna be a lot of people.
Yeah. Okay, so we'll table that one, and Susan will reach out to them so we can get some more information before next meeting. No, we'll make, yeah.
Ooh, and they want to do it March 16?
So then how about we give, how about we make a motion to grant it without alcohol service with reaching out to them if they'd like to, if they'd like to re-advocate for alcohol service, we're gonna need much more detail, and there could be additional provisions required. Yeah. So I will, I will make a motion that we approve it without alcohol service, and let them know that, let them know of the requirement of the custodian needed for four hours for opening and close. Second, all right, any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Uh, I just don't know. If they think they're going to use the sound system, I don't know how they interface with that, and we should just mention that to them.
Yeah, there's, we do, we do not, we do not loan out our problematic equipment.
I was...
They didn't ask for that, did they?
We can barely get our own functions out of it. Okay, so I'm going to put approved, no alcohol service, and custodial fees of four hours. We gotta work till midnight tonight. Okay, so, so we have, that's gonna get signed. Okay, so now we have another one for First Congressional Church looking to use the plains, the Green and gazebo, looks like for the Easter sunrise service. This is gonna be March 31st, from 5:30 a.m. till 8:00 a.m. And... Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep. So, looks like they have everything they need on this. This is one that's been reoccurring for years, so.
It's all signed off?
Yep, all signed off. So motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
All right, second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And... Facility use, Brew Fest, Sunrise Church, right, we have, this was the I-Works, we have an I-Works contract in here.
That, I believe, was the addendum to the one that we already have. They were adding in some services.
Okay.
And we went back and forth about the language, which I believe is added in there.
Okay, do we need to revote this, or do we just need to re-sign it for the addendum?
You probably need to vote it, because it's more money.
It, it's more money, and I think they added the multi-year contract.
Escape clause language. So this is for the I-Work, so it looks like subscription, annual subscription fees for these additional layers is gonna be $750, and no additional setup GIS, their data conversion, so it looks like we have an additional grand total due year one, $750 for this I-Works contract addendum.
And is that coming from ARPA?
Correct.
As the original contracted?
Correct. I talk too much. So no further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Do you want to start taking some of these, Chuck? We have the contract review and approval sign off for the Civic Plus website subscription for 2024. This is...
It's for the website, which I believe you approved already, but we didn't have all the paperwork.
Correct, we need, yeah, we needed everything, so we don't need to revote everything, because we've already voted, we just need to sign off on it. You don't have to sign this one.
Okay.
Probably have to sign a couple places.
I'll go alphabetically from now on.
Did I miss one?
I think I put you all in order of when you came on.
Don't even go this.
So go...
Not helpful.
You guys can take that folder as well. So we have land, landowner permission worksheet. I don't know if that's anything we need to deal with.
Oh, that's, I think that came from Phil, has to do with...
Oh, this is just as, this, oh, this was just as notification of grazing, or? So we, we just have to sign that, yes, we, we know that he's applying for it. Okay, and then we have a purchase order for mapping and planning solutions. This is part of the hazardous mitigation plan update. This is for $9,000. And this is, this is part of that grant, right? Yeah, this is the one, so that's why. Okay. We just didn't have a line, a budgeted line? We did, we had a budgeted line of $1 for this?
We didn't, for $1?
According, according to this. No, that's not, not the grazing. This is, this is the hazardous mitigation plan. That, that we need to qualify for some other stuff.
Is it, is it, is it fully covered by the grant, is it 100% grant?
Well, let's...
Grant amount 9,000.
Was that the one that he said it's 75,000, and that he was checking with Graham to see if it was covered fully from emergency services? I think that was the one he was talking about.
Okay. I just don't know if... Well, no, that's, that's, my, my concern here is that it's not telling me that this is getting paid for by a grant, and I, and look, this looks like it's a grant reimbursement, which we don't have appropriated to spend.
Which means then you can't, you shouldn't sign it, unless you have money from someplace else where you can move to cover that line item.
Well, since they signed it last February, could it have been appropriated back then? Or you don't re?
But this is a new year, so if appropriations weren't made in the current budget that's up for vote on March 12th, then you would...
We're gonna, we'd have to, we'd have to find...
9,000, that's the one that Phil was talking about, where there's a 75% reimbursement, but Graham was looking into from emergency management to see if they covered 100%. But you're saying we have to find money to...
We still have to, yeah, we still have to find money to spend.
You still have to appropriate. Like, if you haven't appropriated it in your budget, you, you can't.
Yeah.
I mean, you can if you find it some other location, but if it had, if the line item is at a dollar, and the money wasn't appropriated for this year, for whatever reason, I don't know if they didn't realize they were gonna get grant money.
Yeah, so I guess...
But usually you appropriate it.
Until we get some more information on this, and then I really wouldn't want to figure out where money's coming from until after March 12th, because that's when you're gonna have to figure out where you would find it from. If, if we had to go down that road, okay. So we will not sign that. Is there anything else?
I have, we've got the updated operating here, and I don't see the camera system on there.
I thought we...
The camera system, the updated camera system that we approved through our group. And Paula's not here, but supposedly she has the panel for it.
Okay, so we need to get that, we need to get that updated on the list, so we can account for it.
I mean, this is an updated list, based on today, because you got, you got building computer on it. Just so we don't forget it, so.
I think the orange may not need to be signed. I took everything out of the orange that I think had to be signed. Some of it was just mine that I had to sign. Okay, so do we have any non-publics or anything? Do you had, you had two, you had, you had two letters in there? Do we need to address those? You had two letters in there? That, do we need to address those?
I think we need to go into non-public to address those letters.
And since I'm recusing myself from that issue.
Yes, you totally are accusing yourself.
So I, I will turn the meeting over to Vice Chairman Charles Hart and. I will go back to work.
2A. What's the answer, public, for 2A?
Chairman has to recuse himself in his next meeting. We will be going into, uh, non-public for RSA 91A3.
2A? No, is it 91, what was it?
It says 91A3 here, but.
2A.
Whatever Susan picks for the one that we need to have. Ellie?
Yes.
Glenn?
Yes.
Chuck? Yes. Laurie?
Yes.